Evening, everyone. It is. Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, February 15th, 2023. And this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Shelby Ronstadt, presiding remotely. And as such, I'm going to rely on staff and the council there in the room to let me know if I'm missing something. I have obviously limited visibility here, so please feel free to speak up if that's the case. Also present are our counselors Kate McAllister, Deb Rule, Andy Groat, Jason Walker, and Justin Dick. Counselor Joel Espiro is absent. If everyone will please stand, I'd like to ask Council President McAllister to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is what we call a righteous stand, one agent under God in this world.
Thank you. Are there any announcements from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could, please. The Bonner General Health Foundation on Saturday, February 4th, held their 15th Annual Heart Ball with the funds going to mammography. They will not allow me to tell you what we've raised until we've already sorted it all out. But I can safely say it was the most amount of money that we have ever made in doing this in 15 years. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, we are absolutely blessed to live in this community with such generosity. We say thank you to the BGH Foundation staff, BGH, our volunteers, and everybody who supported to make that evening successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Council, appreciate that. Anyone else from council? Updates from staff, please.
Just a couple of announcements, Mr. Mayor. We permitted three special events since our last council meeting. First is Winter Carnival Parade of Lights this Friday at 5:00 PM downtown, sponsored by the Greater Sandpoint Chamber of Commerce. A second, Winter Carnival Block Party following the parade, and that will be at about 6:00 PM, right there between Jeff Jones Square and the Ponderay Winery. And the following weekend, we have again permitted the K-9 Peg Pull. That will be on Sunday, February 26th, beginning at 11:00 AM. And they are once again this year at the new location down on Cedar. Used to be at the Granary Building, but they are now down at Cedar. So there will be street closures and impacts related to the block party as well as the K-9 Peg Pull.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that. Just a quick announcement, we will not be taking public comment this evening on Items 7C or 7D. A public hearing will be scheduled at which time the public will have the opportunity to provide testimony on the water rates. So we'll now proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting, which gives the public the opportunity to address myself and council and items either listed on the consent calendar or in any topic not listed on the agenda. Is there anyone here in council chambers who wishes to speak now during the public forum or during any other portion of the meeting? You must complete a signup form available on the table by the front door and hand it to the clerk up front. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak during the general public forum, please raise your hand on Zoom at this time. Madam Clerk, is there anyone wishing to speak during the public forum?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We will now move on to the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $1,976,548.16, reflecting $1,178,663.44 for regular payables and $797,884.72 for payroll. Does council have any questions or are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar?
No.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Groat?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Okay, consent calendar is approved. During the February 1st meeting, council tabled the decision on a proposed amendment to the multimodal transportation master plan, requesting that city staff provide a date for a workshop. Staff has provided a proposed date, and I will entertain a motion to schedule an informational workshop on March 15th, 2023, at the city council regular meeting to discuss the East-West Connection concept included in the adopted multimodal transportation master plan. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, this will be a roll call vote.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for you, if you don't mind. The description of this workshop as an informational session to discuss the adopted multimodal plan, I'm just seeking a little bit of clarification on what the intent of the workshop is and make sure it aligns with what we envisioned when we requested that the workshop be scheduled two weeks ago. Maybe city staff could clarify that language, an informational session on the adopted multimodal plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
So we'll be doing a presentation with the background on the East-West Connection and then related plans in the multimodal plan. And from there, after council has that information, if there will be further actions, then we can discuss that at a future council meeting.
Okay. So the workshop component of this, is that a workshop or is it a presentation? Because when I think of workshop, I usually think of like some public involvement as well.
This one will be primarily informational presentation at this particular workshop, certainly with the opportunity for council to ask questions. So the way we have typically handled our workshops is we move off the dais and go to the back of the room. So it's a more informal conversation with a established time set for that workshop.
And it will be open to the public?
It is open to the public.
Okay.
But the dialogue will be between staff presenting and council.
Okay, so no public comment at that time?
No, there's no decision at a workshop.
Okay, gotcha, but that could lead to a future agenda item where we
Yes.
discuss possible amendments to the multimodal plan?
Council in the future could decide to take action on a workshop. So typically, we're doing them as informational with no decision, so that council has information, has an opportunity to think about something, and then may come back at a later time with a decision.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm a little bit confused because I thought when we made the decision to table that we were going to come back with a workshop that included public input as to the direction of that what you're calling East-West Connection and then focused around the Bueller Intersection. So I'm a little bit confused as to now why we're in a workshop setting that's just for council. That's informational.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
I thought that we already had workshops, and that's why we adopted this plan two years ago. So are you saying that we need to start over again? Is this what you're saying about the plan? Because this is going to be informational for us to get information. And we've had surveys, we've had public input, so I'm confused as well. If we're going to start this process all over again, then that's going to cost us more money to start a whole new plan all over again. And so I'm confused as well because public did have input before we voted on the multimodal plan and adopted that plan. They had plenty of input, we had surveys, we had workshops, we had all kinds of information. So this is really an informational workshop to give us more information to decide what to do going forward. And so if it's decided going forward that we're going to amend this, that pretty much is starting from ground zero. So I just kind of want to make that clear that we're now starting these discussions and we've already adopted this plan. So I'm not sure about why we're heading. I mean, I get the workshop because we need more information, obviously, but I'm not sure where this is headed. Are we asking to start all over again? Because the public did have input. So now we want more input?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
That's fine. So I don't think personally, myself nor members of the public are saying we start at ground zero with the multimodal plan. We're looking specifically at a few blocks from Ontario Street to Cedar Street. And the two weeks ago, we were told that, you know, the purchase of the Dubbs property allows us to move forward with negotiations with the IDT for a possible acceleration of the timeframe within which the Highway 2 corridor is improved through Sandpoint. The multimodal plan, as it was adopted, encompasses all of our city streets, all bicycle paths, sidewalks. It includes levels of detail for different projects that are vastly different from one another. One of the projects for which the level of detail was very fuzzy was the Highway 2 corridor from Ontario Street to Cedar Street. And as it stands, it calls for a four and five lane highway without medians, without pedestrian islands, with lack of clarity over how pedestrians and cyclists would cross from South Sandpoint to downtown, from downtown to North Sandpoint and so on. So I think the desire, at least for me personally, was if we are entering the next phase of progress towards the fulfillment of that component of our plan, it's time to look more closely at that particular, not the whole plan. I'm talking a few blocks from Ontario to Cedar Street, where currently there's very little detail. If you compare that to the Division Corridor, for example, or to an agenda item tonight, which is the GN Corridor, we have detailed concepts for those corridors. Yet those projects, even in tonight's agenda, are as far as two years off before construction even begins. On the GN Road, for example, it was pitched to us last week that it could be within three years that we start looking at the implementation of the Highway 2 East-West Corridor project within the multimodal plan. I think moving from that fuzzy watercolor picture of four and five lanes that we currently have to something closer to what we currently have for GN Road or Division Road, that's what I'm hoping we can progress towards. And I thought the workshop was going to be the first step in getting some more community input on that specific corridor, not the whole multimodal plan by any means. Just bringing us up to where we are already with Division and GN Road and some other elements or some components of the multimodal plan.
Okay, so this will be the first step for information so that we all are on the same page.
And that's fine with me, that's what I was asking for clarification on.
Okay.
I'm not asking for anything to be changed, I just want a clarification on what the purpose of the workshop was.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay, I just would like to add to what Jason is saying, and I agree with him that it is fuzzier. I'm not talking about the entire multimodal plan. And the one thing that hasn't been mentioned is that our options were designed, even with the higher 40,000-foot view and waltic color image that we did not own or the Dubbs property. So because, and that's what was presented us at the last meeting, things could change and we could end up with a much better product for all the people involved in this small, very concise piece of the multimodal plan that was already adopted. I'll just remind you that because there were so many pieces to the multimodal plan and council did accept it, and I believe I did vote yes to accept that plan, but I was never pleased nor were some of the public coming to me pleased with this piece that we're now looking at again. So in my opinion, I'm trying to represent that piece to the public and getting a better product. Because once this goes forward, there's no turning back. We will have this for many, many years to come. So I want to make sure, even if we have to review a small piece, that even if it costs the city money, I think the citizens are going to be willing to manage that to get a better long-term product that they're going to have to live with for the next 50 years.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
We talked about this this morning and our planning for this meeting at our leadership meeting with the mayor. I think the council would find this most helpful to make a decision on the moving forward after the informational workshop. I know it seems that this is an easy pullout of a few blocks of a concept, and that can be addressed by itself. I think what you're going to learn in this workshop is that isn't the case. These concepts were all developed together because what is happening on one section of roadway is impacting others. So Amanda is already working with our traffic engineer on some simulations for this workshop, so you better understand that. And if you make the decision that you want to revisit and we want to re-scope a concept, it is going to be a larger project. It is going to be likely we're in the tens of thousands of dollars with this. And so this will help inform council so that you understand the implications, how they got there. And if you want to pull out a piece and revisit it, how much of the multimodal plan we're pulling out and revisiting? Because respectfully, it will be more than just one section of roadway. It's going to be several of the concepts that will need to be revisited because of impacts. And I think the workshop will help you understand how all of these things are layered together. For example, later on your agenda tonight, you'll be hearing about project on Division Street. And then our Division Street project, remember, we've got that whole corridor that we need to do. But that corridor is based on that, all the improvement happening first. So there are relations with those concepts. And I think revisiting that in an informational session will be informative to both the council as well as the public. And then you may decide to take an action and revisit portions of this, and we can figure out what that work plan looks like. But that's the intention with giving you that information. So moving forward with direction, we can all be clear as to what that exactly is going to involve.
Yeah, I appreciate the discussion and I understand the desire to, we all want the best outcome possible, right? And this, you know, the multimodal transportation plan, as has been approved, went through extensive public engagement process, as were the plans prior to it that helped inform that plan. And I agree that this workshop that is before you for a decision now, it not only, you know, requires that we look at this thing holistically. It's not so simple as pulling out a few blocks, so to speak, but there's also impacts to staff that I think we need to understand, impacts to budget. And we already have our strategic priorities that you've laid out for the city, for city staff. And if we were to make, you know, any significant changes, to say reopen the transportation plan and make significant amendments, it would reorder those priorities and it would reorder our budget. So there's a lot of moving pieces here and a lot of potential impacts. And all of that will be discussed and brought forward to you at this workshop before you. So I think, you know, if we can move forward and vote on this and then have an informational workshop, I think we'll all be in a position where we can make the best decision. So if there's not any further discussion, we have a motion and a second, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Groat?
Yes.
Motion passes. Following amendments requested during the January 18th meeting, excuse me, next, under Old Business, council will consider approval of the final downtown waterfront design competition manual and authorize authorized staff and our consultants to open the competition and solicit design teams. I'll now yield the Florida City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll pull this up on, going to highlight changes for you. Quickly, in the manual, changes that were made based on council feedback and requests that we received at the last meeting. I would also note for council and the public that Dawn Sasseni also is joining us again tonight online. And we thought we'd start with highlighting the changes made. And then if you have any questions, you certainly can ask me or Dawn directly as potentially our competition manager as well.
Good evening, everybody, Mr. Mayor and counselors. Good to see you again, even though it's right by computer.
Good to see you, Dawn.
In our process map, and within the manual, we've highlighted starred those different opportunities in both state, in stage two primarily, when we get down to the two or three teams who will really be putting in the work on this project to be considered by the public and the jury, where those public input opportunities are. We've also clarified that there are opportunities to observe, but we have also built into the process that there will be opportunities for the public to actually submit written comments. And those written comments will be shared with the design teams so that they're directly hearing from the public and it's informing their process, the technical advisory group, as well as the jury. Our intent with the in-person public exhibit, we also made an edit there on that stage two, where it will be both in-person as well as virtual, because we have typically provided those opportunities for the public with our meetings. And our intention with that is we will design both in-person and virtual so that there is the opportunity to submit written comment. We do have that ability on our online platforms as well. And again, as design teams ultimately are presenting their concepts to the jury, that will be in-person, that will be here in City Hall, and that will be open to the public, for the public to hear those full presentations. On our deliverables, in response to feedback from council, we've refined our deliverables a bit. So I'm sorry, I'm scrolling down and running this across the screen so quickly, but otherwise it jumps pages on me. Here, under Section 6.3, on the Stage 2 Vision Submittals, what we had originally in here was refined waterfront designs and a downtown waterfront master plan. We have refined this to align with our discussions where this is refined waterfront designs, so that's specific to primarily city-owned property, but it will also include estimated construction costs. And then on the downtown master plan, we've noted downtown waterfront plan that includes, at a minimum, goals and vision summary, urban design context, place making, wayfinding, and land use and policy recommendations, and also an implementation plan, including phasing and priorities. We're going to have to do one fix on this page where the bullet for downtown waterfront vision plan should be aligned with the refined waterfront designs. It's not a component of, that's its own with subcomponents. So three bullet points with the refined waterfront designs, downtown waterfront vision plan, and land use and policy, or excuse me, implementation plan. I did include in your council packet a link also to another downtown framework plan so that you had some concept of what those documents commonly look like. And there's no one size fits all for every community, but it kind of gives you some sense of what a deliverable might look like for us. And then finally, given the delay from the original schedule and when we had proposed posting this and the difference in our council meetings, this is an updated schedule. So originally, we had proposed wrapping up this competition in late June, but we've lost about a month at this point with revisions, getting this back to council and everybody coordinated on it. So you'll see that reflected in the timeline. This timeline is a little bit different than what was in your council packet. And those differences are, we have changed the date on the Stage 1 Submittals to March 21st. It was originally, I believe, March 28th. We changed the Stage 1 Jury Session to March 23rd, 24th. And then on the Jury Review Public Presentation, we've moved that to July 15th, 16th, and report to council at your second council meeting in July, which is July 19th. So these changes just reflected availability for the whole team that would be working on this project. So again, that's Dawn, Jen Manhart, and we had to align with our council schedules. So those are the changes that you're seeing reflected here from what was in your council packet.
Is that it for the presentation?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, yes, that is all we have for presentation, but we are happy.
Okay, any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, no questions, just a comment. I want to say thank you to staff and to Dawn. I know to set your timeline off and the changes were small and potentially insignificant to some. But having those pieces, whether they're asterisks, and making sure that we have the public comment and the public input, it blows away a lot of the uncertainty that we had prior to this. So I thank you guys for your work, going back and making modifications on this.
Thank you for this comments, counselor.
Mayor, I have a comment too. In speaking to Katie Cox, who is on the jury, and she is an architect. She has a number of architect firms who are ready to submit, they are very excited about this.
Mr. Mayor?
That's good to hear, yeah, go ahead.
One more change I noticed was, I believe you guys made the language with regards to composition of teams a bit more inclusive. Am I correct in that? There were quite a few.
That is correct. As you pointed out in your earlier comments, if every team came in with every discipline that we had, it would be a convention. So we came back and we were very specific about what we think the core team might be, and then suggested that instead of actual members, what they might have is a resource group that they come into. You just went past it, I think, didn't you?
I think it's at the beginning, but
Okay.
Very long document, so I'm hoping I'm getting this to the right spot.
Yeah. But yes, we did make that modification. So I think the teams will be tighter and more specific. And then what other resources they pull into it will basically enhance what the team is. But it might be, you know, a consultant might be with them once or something like that, as opposed to being on the full team. Yeah.
Yes. I'm not sure exactly where we are on what page, Dawn.
I think you went past it earlier, it's on the Stage 2 or Stage 1 Team Composition. I saw you go by it.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Well, Jennifer's looking for that. I just would like to bring our attention back to the original document and how there's some things that jumped out at me that gave me peace of mind that this process does encompass what it is that we want, need, and demand from this competition. And I doubt that it was missed, but it gave, reading the document originally, it gave me a great deal of peace of mind. And it just, it's explicitly stated from this that they are going to celebrate and honor the past. They are going to recognize the pressure demands and the needs of the present and help us go towards defining the future of the downtown waterfront. So that's been stated in the original document. They get it, this document understands, I understand that we took more time. And there's a greater level of confidence moving forward. I'd like to say that I am confident and excited about this from the beginning. However, I appreciate the extra process. Let's work towards some solutions.
Thank you, counselor.
All right. From the very beginning, we, what we've learned over time and running these competitions, that the competition manual is extremely important. As I have said many times to you, it is the blueprint for how we proceed. But it also is a record document. And I think this one has evolved for you all. The document that has been prepared with staff and input from different people in the community as well is basically a record document. If you didn't do the competition, this would still be a very valuable document as far as mentioning the planning process that you've gone through, the development that the community has gone through for 100 years. It's just a very fine historic piece going forward. And I would especially like to thank staff and all those citizens we met with from different times for making it that. It is a very, very fine record document as well as a commencement document for the competition itself.
Thank you, Dawn.
I'm proud of it.
That's great, well, we are too, I hope. Counsel, any further questions? All right. Is, Madam Clerk, is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the downtown waterfront design competition manual. Opening the competition and soliciting design teams. Is there a motion? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, under old business, the city's consultants from FCS Group will present the results of two key study components. From the water rate study. One, the cost of service analysis and two, rate design. Just a reminder that we will not be taking, we will not be taking public comment. On this evening on items seven C or seven D. As a public hearing will be scheduled, at which time we will hear public testimony on the proposed new revised rates. I will now yield the floor to Utilities Director Greg Lanning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Greg Lanning, the Utilities Director. And I've got a, just a couple introductory slides before I turn it over to our rate consultant. If I can navigate as well. I can scroll also. Can't see my arrows up here.
Shouldn't be able to move that.
I can get up here. Thank you, Jennifer. I appreciate the help in so many ways. This is a slide I borrowed from the presentation that you're gonna see here pretty soon. The reason I brought this one in was just to reiterate. That there are four components to the rate design. Cause council and members of the public are probably thinking, gosh, didn't we put this to bed? Didn't we go it on there? And what we did in the, the first two parts of this were. Looked at the revenue requirement overall. And I have a slide later that you'll probably recognize as well. And then also the new user fee facility or new user facility fees. Which were the cost to connect or to buy into the utility. What's left are the two on the right, cost of service analysis and rate design, and that's what you'll hear tonight. That's the slide I was hoping you'd recognize from previous presentation. We had a workshop on this back in June. As a matter of fact, going back before that, at least in recent history. I arrived here January third of last year. And on January sixth, I met these folks here, the consultants, as well as council or the majority of council. So that's how long ago or how much we've been working on this. It's not like it's been put aside either, by the way. It's been worked on diligently since. One of the main reasons, as a matter of fact, and part of my job description included this rate study and, and putting to it. But at the time then, the overall rate increases then were, or that we voted on, council voted on and proved that were. Then worked up into the budget where three percent, three point eight percent increase overall in water. And then the new user facility fee for a three quarter inch meter of seven thousand eight hundred dollars and seventy five dollars. Sewer also had increases overall. And we're gonna come back with sewer increase or sewer rate update as well, similar to this one. This is water only today.
Greg, before you move on, can you remind us what MCE is an acronym for or what stands for?
It's a meter equivalent in, in the water, in the water world. These rates are, are based on the size of the meter that you have. Anywhere, and this one's a three quarter inch meter. But you may have larger meters, you know, two, four inch meters. And they go up exponentially in terms of cost related to the MCE. But this is a, this gives us a basis on which to approach this. ERU is an equivalent residential unit in the sewer side. Which is, has kind of the same meaning to it, residential unit being a single family home. Whereas this MCE in particular is the, pretty much the equivalent of a single family home also.
Thank you.
You'll see this slide also, but I wanted to kind of emphasize it because to me it's a, it's a good summary of what cost of service is. The cost of service, by the way, by definitions, the equity evaluation. And then aligns cost pools over to the right there with customer classes on the X apps. You'll see single family, multifamily. These are our customer classes. And this is where rates will be assigned to. The pool then, you know, base speed flows, fire use and protection. Or fire protection. You'll see those later in the slide or in the presentation by the consultant. Each of these then, these costs then are distributed amongst the customer classes. The other part I like about this slide is it shows the equity side of it. And it shows multifamily in this case paying too much. Whereas irrigation needs to come up and pay a little more as well as wholesale rates. And so I want you to look for that or listen for that during the presentation. And then also, if you have questions, you know that this slide, by the way, comes up at the very end or towards the end of their presentation. So if you have questions, this will probably be the good place to figure out how cost of service works.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. I'm a little confused. I recognize single family, multifamily, commercial, industrial. These are like zones in our city. These are types of development. What is irrigation? Who is irrigation? Who, who's paying for that water? Isn't, can you just clarify, who are the customers who are underpaid for irrigation?
We have a separate irrigation account which you can sign up for, separate and apart from your regular use. You might be a single family home with a very large lot. Or you might be some other user. A commercial user might have, you know, very large landscaped area that on, in the summer, they need the water for irrigation. Yeah, whereas in the winter, often they, they'll have us come shut it off and not use it at all. And so it's set up specifically for that purpose. That summer use to water your lawn or your landscape.
Do many single family homes sign up for a separate type of water account? Or is, 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 is like most people who are watering their lawns, is that just measured under single family?
You, you know, they'll have and they can answer that, the rate consultant can. They can drill down on that specific to the percent. There are homes that do have separate irrigation accounts as an example.
It's primarily larger entities, so like a significant. One of the accounts under irrigation is Lake Pend Ore school district with their fields and, and, and things. And as Greg mentioned, some of the larger commercial, commercial customers. That have large parking lots and have landscape lots. You'll see them where the landscape lot will be the irrigation for the parking lot, whereas they'll be commercial for serving their building. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate that.
I'm, I'm working on getting Sarah up here.
Yeah, it's not bad, is it? Yeah. So therefore, and then also you will hear. Rate design itself, it's the last component, the fourth component. And of course, Angie and Brooke will go into that. But that's then collecting those of the target revenue. Having identified those in the cost of service and need adjusting. What are the fixed and variable rates? We have a fixed rate, monthly rate, just for having the water service. And then there's a variable related, related to the amount of water in this case that you use. And the consultant will go into that as well. And then before I introduce them as well, then. Wholesale is an interesting one here too, and they've got a great section on wholesale. They'll, they'll, there's a map in there that you should recognize from other water discussions that we've had with you. But the map will show you our three wholesale users and identify them. And then there are different methodology as well, which is, to me was very interesting in terms of the financial part of this. It's based on rate of return and. In other words, a rate of return is assigned to a rate or a return on investment. And it's a great methodology. I want you to listen closely to it. There's a lot of detail behind it and that's why they have so many slides on there. There's thirty four slides yet to come here on this presentation. Also a reminder on council goals, what, what I liked about this. So again, back to history, June, we had a workshop, July, we, we voted on. These rate increases for overall revenue enough. But when I first got here, also we were doing strategic planning. And I was, I was able to and privileged to join you in some of the latter parts of the strategic planning, which we discussed goals. And the, the most outstanding thing, and this is a little deviation, and I know we don't have a lot of time, but. Was the wastewater treatment plant. I, I thought, how cool was that? When I first arrived here, that that was a major goal. The community knew it, council knew it. And we'll hear more about that, of course, in the next presentation. But the fact that we had a brand new, there are several brand new master plans to, to go on. This master plan in particular, we were able to upload capital projects, for instance, in, into the financial plan. A twenty year plan for capital projects, but we focus mostly on five and near term capital improvements. Financial forecasting in general. Reliable infrastructure was a goal. This whole plan and this rate study is part of that. David, data driven. And I was joking a little bit with the consultant, but as well as Sarah. The, the model, the plan behind this is a huge spreadsheet, you know, twelve, thirteen tabs. And thousands of data points, and each of those tied to each other with formulas. And so the data is amazing and. Easily to drill down on. And plus, by the way, we get the model, the city owns it. And so, and we've been part of the models. We've been able to get inside of it in terms of using it and transparency and ability to use it in the future. Little bit on conservation, the tiered rates are still in here. The best way to conservation in water is through increasingly expensive use of the water. If you use more water, you should pay for more. You'll see those tiered rates in there. That was a council goal from long ago. And it's been, it's still in here and you'll see it in the presentation. This is a report only tonight. There's no action on this part, but the, the item after that, we'll have an action item, that's just a public hearing. With that, I'd like to introduce with FCS, Angie and Brooke, this shows yours.
Want me to share my screen? Okay. Thank you for that introduction, Greg. And good evening, Mayor and members of council. We have been working long and hard to get to this particular point. And Mr. Lanning has done a fabulous job setting the stage in terms of what we want to be doing this evening. Which is really focusing on the water utility rate study. Again, we'll come back. That's the sewer utility. The initial discussion is just gonna try to get us on the same page, back, back to the same page again, a quick little background. Quick understanding of really what were those study components, and then we'll dive right into the cost of service and rate design. And as Mr. Lanning mentioned, we'll also be talking about wholesale analysis, since that is a specific and different type of user group. And so there was a special analysis completed for the wholesale customers. Terms of the quick background, again, we started this process. We've been on this journey for about a little over a year now. And now have completed the, the specific additional task for the water utility. But this has been through, you know, work that has been completed through, through last year and ongoing through this year. With the overall adjustment again, the city implementing the rates in two thousand twenty three, October first at about three point eight percent. There is a future financial plan, but the city will come back and revisit those financial plan and the rate adjust. In terms of the key study components, now you're gonna see really where we are focusing this evening. So of the four major tasks and components that we looked at, cost of service or the equity evaluation. Is what's going to be discussed this evening, as well as rate design. And cost of service again is really taking that overall pie. We kind of defined the overall pie last year. Now we're starting to slice the pie to identify what each specific customer group should be paying in terms of their proportionate share. For their use and demands in the system and their facility requirements. And so that's really what cost of service is intended to do. Once we know what those particular revenue generation and cost of service pools are. We then can move to rate design to determine how are we going to assess those various different fees to generate the appropriate amount of revenue that we need. So we will dive right in now to the cost of service analysis. And again, wanted to point that this is for the retail customers. Wholesale will be separate and, and discussed at the latter part of the presentation. As Mr. Lanning had mentioned, the cost of service process is very data driven. There's significant information. It is grounded with the American Water Works Association standard and best practices for, for setting fees and charges. But very specific to you all. So we request a number of different data points, information, use existing plans. To identify really what do we look like in terms of our, our water system? How do we use water? What are our systems composed of? What is the value of those systems? And then how do we begin to align the various costs to really how users are demanding our system? So that we're setting a cost for those particular services. And so we thought it'd be a really good opportunity to first start out with, well, what do we look like? And so here on the table, what you have is the major customer classes in the table, single family, multifamily, commercial irrigation, industrial, large user. But what you can see pretty, pretty quickly is that the number of meters are made up mainly of the single family class. About almost eighty percent, followed by, you know, the commercial customer class. If we look over to the second column of numbers, that's total annual use. And so although the single family customers make up about eighty percent of the customers in terms of meters. They're really only making up about forty five percent of the usage. So now that's when other customer classes in terms of use. Are starting to be sharing into different proportion in terms of looking at the number of customers and how much water each of those customers are using. The graph is going to be something that we'll come back and begin to start differentiating. Why does it cost different to, to differ, to serve different customer classes? That's really what we're trying to drill, drill down on is that fundamental question. And as you can see on that graph, you know, we have your major customer groups graphed out. Overall, it looks like, you know, during the winter time periods, you're pretty flat, pretty stable. People are using pretty much about the same amount. It's when you get to those summertime periods is that, is, is where we start differentiating ourselves. And if I'm looking for the, the top of the bar graph to the, to the bottom, residential, single family is really causing the greatest peak on the system. What that does mean is that we are operating our systems, it costs for to design and size our systems in order for us to have to meet that peak. If we were only at that average usage, you could see we would be very different and look very differently. But because as a system, we have to meet that peak day requirement, that starts becoming and adding cost to the system. And so again, that single family class is kind of causing the, the highest peak, followed by yellow with the commercial and then irrigation and that more purple. And so again, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about really how does that translate to cost in the future slides. So as we'd mentioned, cost of service is that equitable share of cost for each customer class, again, using industry standard methodology. We are using very specific data driven information, usage and demand, planning reports that you have, comprehensive plans. You know, facility requirements, what type of facilities do we have in place and have invested in and who is requiring those system to be in place? As well as who are our customers and what do they look like with the number? And so this is very data driven and, and built on the foundation of city specific data, even though we are using an industry best practice approach. And again, really what we're trying to answer is, does it cost differently to serve different customer groups? In terms of the cost of service process, is it just kind of an easy visual to look at in terms of what are we trying to do with cost of service? So the various top piece, step one, we are allocating our total system cost to cost pool. So that is what we defined last year. What is our total system cost? Now we're looking, drilling down a little bit more to say, what functions do I provide as a water utility provider in order to meet the services of my customers? So we look at things as how many customers are on the system, what meter sizes do you have on the system and who's pulling what capacity from that? What is our total use versus our peak use as well as a differentiating factor is fire. There are some of your customers who require different flow requirements. Again, requiring us to look differently at how we size our different storage systems, our pipe sizes, et cetera. So that begins to become the differential that starts defining, how do I set cost for each customer class? Once we set those functional cost pools and start separating our costs in that manner. We then develop allocation factors in order to eventually get to the point where we're going to be able to assign each of those cost pools. Down to our customer classes. So our single family class, multifamily class, commercial irrigation, et cetera. So it kind of takes this step process of just kind of starting to peel things away. Establishing very city specific information, using that to establish allocation factors, which will ultimately get down to, this is the target revenue. We should be collecting for that class. Using the, a very summarized version of the analysis that we've been through with staff. Essentially where our, how our cost breakdown is that a majority of your costs, forty seven percent are there to meet your peak day requirement. And that's kind of what we saw on that graph is that you kind of have that peak. We're sizing and we're operating differently to be able to meet that peak, even though throughout the rest of the year, we're pretty stable on average in terms of our system. And so a lot of cost is for meeting peak requirements. And so a lot of cost is for meeting peak requirements. We have about thirty-eight percent to meet base or what we call average system requirements. And then, as you can see there, that's followed up with some costs associated with meeting fire protection needs, our customer needs, billing, customer service administration. And then meters and services, reading meters and, and, and maintaining those particular meters as well. And you can see the definitions on the, on the right hand side there. But essentially when we're looking at setting our cost to these cost pools, as we look at your line item budget detail. This is how your particular costs were starting to segregate themselves into the cost pools that we'll be looking at. When we talk on step two, developing allocation factors, so once we have those cost pools, again, meters. Our customer equivalents, our total use, our peaking factors, our fire flow. You can see the different percentages that are starting to begin to differentiate. Who is billing, being allocated cost for each of those various different allocation factors? And so if we just took meters, for instance, again, we see that the single family class. Has about almost eighty percent of the number of meters. So any dollar that we put in that meter cost pool, seventy-eight cents of that dollar is going to go to the single family class. Quite differently, if we put a dollar in the annual total use bucket, forty-five cents of that dollar is going to go to the single family class. And so the, the prior slide that showed how we were separating costs between peak. Base, customer fire, we then apply these allocation factors and you can see how costs start differentiating themselves by customer class. And while again, we can see here is that although the single family has a largest amount of counts, it only has about half of the usage. Okay, so that's going to start showing some differences. Irrigation and single family classes, however, even in, and it showed in the graph, have the highest peaking factors. And so those cause pressure in terms of, of our sizing our facilities and cost our facility more. And the commercial industrial classes require higher fire flow proportion. So per gallon, twenty-five hundred gallons per minute for two hundred and forty hours versus a thousand gallons for sixty minutes. That is a cost differentiator as well when we're being a cost of service. Speaking of peaking, because it has, again, it's one of your biggest cost drivers, we do specifically look at, again, those peaking requirements. And who is, again, placing those requirements on the system? Again, certain classes are putting more pressure when it comes to the higher peak use in the summertime period. So you can see there that the single family class is what we call a two point three peaking factor. So based on their average day use to their peak day use, what kind of factor are we looking at in terms of that? And so the, the single family class has about a two point three factor. Commercial is about two point oh, and then irrigation, which is the larger one, is about four, four, four point oh. And you can see that because you can see in the winter months of the, the very bottom line there, the purple. Is essentially showing very, you know, non-existent usage, and then we get to the peak and it's pretty high usage during the summertime. And so that's what we're comparing is the average to the peak and what factor that is, what ratio that is. Step three then brings all that information together. So we've separated our costs, we've put them in our cost pools. We've applied those allocation factors to our particular cost pools. When we sum all of that information up, essentially what you have is the cost of service summary as you have on slide twelve. Now that bar, the, the dash bar is essentially showing. That that's about plus or minus five percent of the overall average. So if a hundred percent was at cost of service, you can be plus or minus five percent. The overall average and still really be considered the range of reasonableness. Why do we say that? It's because cost of service is kind of a snapshot of a point in time. I pulled some of your information in a snapshot of a point in time. If we go three years down the road and I take that snapshot again, you might look a little different. So we want to give you room that there is going to be potentially some flex, some different costs that might come up within those three years. That we don't want to be so rigid that it has to be exactly at that hundred percent. So we did plus or minus five percent. Again, what we show here is the ones that are within that band are at their cost of service. If you're outside of that band below or above shows that we need to make some type of. To get you into that particular range of reasonableness. And so here, multifamily is showing that it is paying slightly higher than the cost of service that has been calculated. And irrigation paying slightly less than what they need to be paying in order to be with. Service. And so when we get results like this, again, it's been some time since we had a cost of service be completed. We like to phase things in over time. So yes, that snapshot looks like this is what it looks like today. We want to make sure that if we come down three to five years down the road, take that similar snapshot. We're still within that range and we're not too far out of what, we didn't make one decision that's going to completely, you know, throw this whole thing out of kilter. And so we like to face things in slowly over time to the cost of service and also to minimize impacts to customers. What that phase in discussion centered around is, could we potentially phase costs in for the retail customers? Through a six year time period through two thousand twenty-eight. And so what you'll see in this particular table here is that, again, you have your major customer groupings on the left. The first column of numbers you see are all three point eight percent. That is the rate increase that was implemented October first. Equally across the board for all of your customer classes. The second, you can see that three point eight hasn't changed, so we're not generating any more or less revenue. If the target is we're still staying within that three point eight percent, it's just how we're collecting it. It's going to be different between customer classes to be more in line with that cost of service phase in. And so that's why you can see when we look at here, irrigation, which needed to go up, is above the overall three point eight average. Multifamily is below the three point eight average because it had to come down a little bit to be within that band of cost of service. Commercial and industrial were about even in terms of they were in within that band. And then because single family happens to be your largest customer, that kind of becomes the plug of, you know, what do we need to, to, for the remainder in terms of the revenue? So it's a little bit less in terms of the two thousand twenty-three proposed. As we move out over time with the phase in, it's slightly less than the overall average, but close to that overall. So that is the cost of service in a very summarized version in terms of how did that equity evaluation turn out? Now that we have the cost pools in place, the goal now is to say, if I needed to collect that cost of service for that customer class. How do I collect it with the, with the fees that I charge between my fixed charges and my variable charges? This again does not include wholesale, that will be a different, separate discussion. When we initially have the discussions for rate design, we do start with the existing rate structure. Discuss if there's any issues, considerations for change, et cetera, anything that, you know, really needs to be looked at. And so our overall objective with rate design is that we want to align our fixed costs and our variable costs. So try to be somewhat right, you know, have some revenue stability, but also if there's fixed cost, we want to collect it from our fixed charges as much as possible, variable, variable charges. Most utmost importance is generating the efficient amount of revenues. We want to make sure that we're going to collect that target revenue by customer class so that we can be assured that we're collecting three point eight percent overall. Well, we also know that there are different objectives that we may have to accomplish. There are affordability issues potentially, there are conservation or revenue stability issues that we have to keep in mind. And so sometimes we can specifically align things to be cost of service based a hundred percent. But sometimes that may not make sense for affordability reasons or for revenue stability reasons, and so we have to make concessions. And then what we want to do at the very end also is to make sure that any major change that we had is not going to impact our customers too significantly. So did the changes that we make? How are, how does that actually result to an actual customer bill or typical customer bill? What does that, what does that do to our customers? So in terms of the water rate design, there were quite a few things that we wanted to, to look into and drill down a little bit more on. The first one, again, we wanted to note that this is not a revenue increase, it is, is revenue neutral. So we're staying at that three point eight system overall revenue increase. And so no additional increases for the two thousand twenty-three time period, it's just how we're collecting the revenue. We had, do have some shifts for the residential class in terms of the tier threshold, so we do have our tier threshold. We do have some suggestions and some modifications for the first and second tiers, and we'll go through each of these in the next several slides. We did want to implement cost of service phase in, so again, not just immediately implementing things. Immediately for the retail customers, we wanted to phase it in over a multi-year time period to get to their cost of service. We are looking at eliminating the build minimum usage for the residential class. So right now there is a minimum charge that you must pay regardless of usage for the single family class. Also eliminate the seasonal rates for multifamily and industrial, as we saw in that graphic, they really are not large peekers. So having a seasonal rate just did not seem as, as necessary or applicable in terms of those particular classes. And then finally, we want to try to simplify all of this for the commercial class and get them combined together a little bit more to streamline their rate structure, or excuse me, their schedule.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good question, Angie. Could mitigate rate increases on multifamily? So just looking back, because multifamily is currently, their cost of share is above the five percent of acceptable threshold, isn't it? So the rate, proposed rate increases for multifamily, we're looking at zero point eight percent a year.
Correct.
Okay, so mitigate rate increase, it's, it's the smallest rate increases of all the different classes.
Yeah, and that's how we're trying to mitigate it is we're following cost of service, we're going to bring those rates.
Oh, so that, that implies the eight, zero point eight percent. Okay, okay, got it.
And I, I have a question as well around the, um, eliminate. Build minimum uses for residential class, is that an industry standard? Or were we? Were we, uh, stand out in that we charged a, a minimum usage for residential clients?
It used to be a very common thing that people did for revenue stability when fixed charges were really. A lot of times people wanted them to be the meter, meter fixed charges, wanted to be as low as possible. And so it was a revenue stability option for a lot of cities to implement. Those have been going out of favor in the recent past, and so we're not seeing as many minimum charges on water utility rates as we have before. So that is definitely something, especially for the single family class. Because of the fact that it, when we start thinking about affordability, that be, that starts affecting affordability. Because regardless of use, you are paying a minimum bill. So even though if someone's trying to conserve water, let's say they're going to pay that minimum bill regardless.
So if you were a single family residence in this, with this new proposed, uh, rate. And you literally used zero gallons of water in a month, you, your bill would be zero dollars?
You would still have your fixed meter charge, but it would be less than the minimum charge today.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll show you an example of kind of how that works as well.
Thanks.
So I have one more question, Angie. Um, so when we look at the proposed like seven point eight percent increase for irrigation. Do you build into your models any assumption of like elasticity or responsiveness among customers? I mean, i- if over the next six years. Um, you know, that's of, overall, that will accumulate to more than a fifty percent increase in water bills for irrigation customers. Do we assume that they're going to respond by reducing their consumption over that time? And does that adjust then their, uh, where they are in that? Cost to cus, uh, cost to customer chart?
Yeah, so at this point, we have not built in any assumption that their demand would decrease. It's certainly something that we considered before. And what that would do is it would result in us setting the rates actually a bit higher to ensure that we could recover the necessary revenue. What we would propose though is those periodic checkpoints. So like Andrew said, the phase in process will allow us to check in at midpoint, let's say, to see if we see some of those behavior changes. Because certainly then we'd want to take another look. Take a glance at cost of service again, see if those basic behavior changes have, have actually happened, which would change perhaps this outcome.
And the good news is too, on irrigation is not what, it's one of your smaller classes. And so the amount of revenue that is subject to variability, if they did come back, is not going to be as impactful as if it was the, definitely the single family.
Yeah, it's one of the smallest, but it's, it's going to bear the largest share of the cost increases.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so I was going to save my question, I think I had it marked down as slide thirty, but it seems like we're in this zone right now. So. Can you explain to me, when we go further along, it looks like we're putting all these, the industrial use and the commercial loose. We're starting to put it into the same category and we're going to get rid of some of these categories. And then we have the different spikes in usage. Um, and I'm wondering if we have thought about, um, and then we're sort of changing the minimums or the classes with how we build that. And my question was. Um, it seems like we're getting rid of some of that and allowing for more usage. So will that encourage certain? Industries to maybe move here because we still do have a little bit of commercial property and such. And then become heavy water users and cause those spikes. Whereas the way we have it set up now, maybe the system to some degree is working. I know there needs to be a lot of changes and I appreciate all your hard work. But does that question make sense to you? And maybe we should push it to slide thirty? If that's where that comes in better, but.
I think, you know, there's different. I would say there's different things in your toolkit to determine how customers are going to use and behave. And so we always say rates is one thing in the, in the toolkit of how you can send price signals to try to change behavior or incentivize one. Behavior over another behavior. There will always be education, there's always going to be devices. And so it's going to also be on the, important for those particular programs to be in place. If you did have a large user come in, you started seeing them, you know, overused, overused water. Then we'd want to also not only send them more price signals with rates, but also. With education, with implementation and possibly with even ordinances. And you have the ability to keep that separate, to keep that rate structure separate. So let's say you kept the industrial class just in case large users came in, you could absolutely do that. Um, you would have to be definitions in terms of what is defined as that industrial class and making sure that you are auditing and making sure that the appropriate customers are in that. Did I answer that question?
I believe so. So we will have to pay close attention and because we don't want to end up with, I mean, not that we have enough space. But for instance, a paper mill is a huge water use type of industry. And if they were to come and go, hey, they have cheap rates, let's go move there and take advantage of that system. I just want to make sure there's some sort of checks and balances with what we're doing.
And I don't, I don't see anyone, uh, moving in here because of our cheap rates.
You never know, right?
Well, yeah, I mean. Anyway, I just wondered how much that affected our true spikes or not, but I'll let you continue, it was just.
And, and definitely something to, you know, to keep an eye on and, and watch. And this is why, you know, we generally recommend doing these things about every three to five years, just to make sure, you know, hey, are we still maintaining within where we need to be? Or do we need to be adjusting and, and modifying and flexing in terms of what we look like today? Because you will evolve and you will change as a community.
So since we're, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Questions that I'm just going to ask this one about those spikes in August, is it? Can, it's August, so I'm assuming that it's watering lawns as well as increased of doing loads of laundry. If there's a way that we can distinguish that, because we also are. Travel and tourism is a big deal here, and we do have many people that come in in the winter, but much, much more that comes in. And so. Though, are they loads of laundry? Is it watering lawn? The answer is probably yes. And then if that's the case, I don't even, may, maybe you could. Answer this, it. If I am watering my lawn, can I get a better rate for water my lawn than doing my laundry? I didn't.
That, that also brings a policy decision, you know, where do you place the value? Is it okay, is it more? Do we want people to be using water to water their lawn, or do we want people to be using water to water their lawn? So you know, so, so, excuse me, to do laundry. So that also becomes where that policy choice comes in, right? So from a cost perspective, sure, that's the easy answer, right?
Yep.
Now we start getting into more policy discussion.
Right, and sorry, pardon me. So we know that there's this spike and we know that there's this spike because of watering lawns as well as doing the laundry. And so there, you know, I appreciate the awareness of the affordability component. As well as the conservation component, and when we know that there's this spike in August. And for, you know, a, a dad that had a bunch of daughters at home. Uh, I didn't water my lawn all that much because we were doing a bunch of laundry. So to manage my bill, but it, with, with the. The volume change for the base rate payer that has changed, that would put someone like me as the single dad with a, it is. Far more affordable with this structure. So, okay, thank you.
And we'll be chatting a little bit about more of the specifics tiers and how we came up with those as well. This slide in terms of slide seventeen is really just to give us a, a background on what you're currently charging today. So you have something in comparison. So again, you do have a fixed charge for all customer classes. So regardless of if you're a single family, commercial, if you have a two inch meter, you're going to pay the two inch charge. The class doesn't matter in terms of meter charges. Where things start differentiating is the volume charges. And you can see there, single family has a four tier rate structure. Zero to three thousand, the next cutoff is fifteen thousand, forty thousand, and then over forty thousand. Multifamily and industrial, see you have, you have seasonal rates there. And again, as we looked at, you know, how they actually are using water, there really is not a big peak. In terms of the multifamily industrial for that, uh, summertime usage. And then commercial, large user and irrigation, it's that rate. Very common in terms of, you know, kind of the industry for those classes. For the monthly fixed charge, we are recommending maintaining the existing charges that. Over one, uh, implementation of the three point eight percent. Increase there, and so this has no changes, again, all classes will have the same, uh, charge per meter size. Again, a very modern rate structure, that's what we see in the industry today. Where we do start seeing differentials and some of the changes that we discussed is the residential rate design change. And so here on the left hand side, you can see is what your existing rates look like. And so the, the zero to three, three to fifteen, et cetera. The percentages are showing you the percent of usage that falls within each block. So the reality is the majority of your usage is in the first, the, the first and second tiers there. Very little actually is in the over forty, there is still some over forty, but very little, about three point two nine percent of, of the volume of your total water system is in that fourth tier. When we had the ability to look at, again, the data that was provided to us in terms of how the city's customers are using water. But the averages, with the summer averages, et cetera. What we looked at is that we wanted to adjust that first tier from zero to three thousand to zero to six thousand. So giving more of that life, more of the lifeline indoor usage allowance at that, that lower rate for families. We looked at adjusting the second tier slightly to be more reflective of twice the summer average. We looked at adjusting the second tier slightly to be more reflective of twice the summer average. So again, we're not again really constraining here. We're giving you the ability to do some outdoor. Uh lawn watering, but so we we made that at two, we set that at twice the summer average, so going from fifteen thousand to twenty thousand. Third tier twenty thousand to forty thousand, and then that last year stayed the same at over forty thousand. We did want to know, you know, over that over forty thousand, yes, it still does have individual usage in there. It is a pretty significant rate. However, that is seven times the average of your single family customer. So that is a lot of water that you are allowing in that fourth tier. Still does encourage conservation. That really was the overall goal. So we didn't want to do away with the kind of the the tiered rate structure, but we wanted to just modify it to again, how we're evolving, how we're changing in terms of our average use and summer use, et cetera. And also address affordability with the tiered rate structure at, uh, excuse me, the tier one rate structure increasing slightly, but also uh eliminating that minimum usage allowance that we talked about.
And Angie, remind me again on elimination of that uh minimum use charge, i- is that across the board or is that just with residential customers?
Just with residential.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think I think that's all that has the. For water.
We believe that's what all that has the actual minimum charge is the single family class.
For water.
Water, sorry.
Okay, so there isn't a minimum charge for commercial customers, say?
Their fixed charge.
Ju- just the meter charge? Correct? Okay.
Mister Mayor, um, just, so you determined the zero to six thousand because that's what average families are using. So they were kind of ignoring the zero to three thousand tier. I'm in water conservation, so it wasn't effective? Is that?
No, I think it's just looking at, you know, how do, when you're looking at what we look at as the winter average, because that really is representative of a lot of times what's indoor water use for irrigation in the summertime. And so what you were averaging for your single family class was closer to the six thousand gallons per per month. And so really what that one is doing is trying to allow more for potentially bigger families that are using more indoor indoor use water and not necessarily using it for as irrigation. But I don't know that anybody was necessarily ignoring it. It was just potentially a hard threshold to keep within if you did have a larger family.
Okay, that makes more sense to me. So um. Even if you're trying to conserve with your low flow showerhead and your smaller toilet flushes and all those other things. Even those newer homes were still falling in that zero to six thousand, no matter what. Newer systems they were using to, you know, decrease flow. So, okay, okay.
Moving to the other rate design changes. And again, here we just kind of lump the the all the others. So the multifamily, commercial, industrial, large users. Well, you can see there on the right hand side is the proposed changes and so simplifying those particular rate structures so that. Flat usage for multifamily, no summer or winter uh acknowledge in terms of the proposed rates. And again, collapsing. So the commercial, the industrial and the large user would become one class. And the industrial and industrials could be user would no longer have that seasonal usage of winter. And again, here in terms of seasons, multifamily and industrial, as we showed, they really just do not have a large peak. And so that pricing signal really, you know, was was. Uh, not necessarily um doing anything in terms of messaging. And we're trying to again, make sure that we're aligning customers with building codes, exits of nation. So we actually dug in quite a bit to the multifamily class to make sure that they were in the appropriate classes and they were aligned appropriately with what class they actually fell into commercial. Et cetera. Slide twenty one again is just here, just showing you what you have currently had on the left hand side and then the changes that we're proposing on the right hand side. And they also are highlighted for you just to kind of show you those particular changes.
And uh Mister Mayor. An- Angie, th- these numbers on the right, this is like year one, right, of our five or six year, and then they'd increase at the rate annually that we saw on the previous slide. Okay.
Mister Mayor, I think too, um, for council to understand and with the equalization, one of the goals administratively working through these. Uh, our rate design was also to. Simplify so that things are more clear. This, for example, these different rates for summer and winter. Um, just so council is aware, what that would actually require is our billing clerks got to go in twice a year and go manually make all of these changes. And then customers are coming in with questions about why last month was my rate best? Now this month it's that. So our goal was to try to get more transparency and clarity to the public. And um also to reduce some of the time with this complicated structure that we have with changes that we're making mid-year.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Uh, the next slide, slide twenty two is trying to show some of the potential impacts to various different usage. If I was a customer at, let's say, a low. Uh, low usage at a thousand gallons, two thousand, four thousand, more average at about the six thousand, and then the medium and high, just wanted to give you some. Flavor in terms of what a potential bill would look like at various usage levels. When you look at the first two, so the low one thousand, low two thousand, that's where you can see that minimum bill on the first column. So they stays the same at the twenty eight sixty nine. So regardless, if you use two thousand or one thousand. You were gonna pay twenty eight sixty nine. By eliminating that, you can see that now that changes. You're still paying a fixed meter charge, but you're now paying based on usage. And so it does allow those lower users to have the benefit of that lower use. And then again, the average is about the, you know, three point six eight percent decrease. Really what we're seeing most of the uh impact would be the higher use in terms of forty thousand rate. Similarly, on the table below, the commercial customer, this is assuming a two inch meter size, low, average, medium and high. You can see there the low impact is about two dollars and fifty six cents in terms of that particular bill. The average about five dollars, medium about closer to ten. And if you're high using a lot of water, that would be about twenty five dollars in terms of that particular customer, commercial customer. So that concludes the retail, what we'll call the retail cost of service that we wanted to, I'll pause there just to make sure that if we wanted to. To focus again on any additional questions that you might have, we can go ahead and answer those before we dive into wholesale. If not, I'll go ahead and dive into wholesale. So the wholesale analysis is a a different customer class that um. Again, what we have here, I think uh Mister Lanning had mentioned that you've seen this live, this uh map, it should be somewhat familiar to you. But again, the overall goal with wholesale is that we wanted to recognize that these are customers that are different and unique and that are served differently. You have about three different wholesale customers. We're gonna call wholesale customers. So Northside Water Users, Itoise, and then Serinda Heights Water District is who we. We who are providing that particular service to. When we are looking at that particular customer grouping, we are looking again at the specific data of that particular customer group. And when we think about wholesale customers. As we'd mentioned, they they are termed that because they are served differently. Many times what that means is that they are a customer who is purchasing a commodity in this particular case, purchased water. To then be uh essentially purchased and sold and resold to their particular customers and distributed to their particular customers. So they're not using the city's distribution system. Paying that particular water and then also adding their particular cost and distributing to their customers. And so that's why they are a unique rather than being a retail customer. We're we're are grouping them as wholesale customers. When we think about wholesale customers, there is a different uh rate rate methodology that is applied. And again, this is based on American Waterworks Association rates and and charges approaches and and industry practice. What we look at for the those particular components are, we obviously want to collect the appropriate and proportional operating and maintenance costs that is associated with delivering them water. They want to, we want to collect the annual depreciation again for the facilities that they're using to get from the treatment plant to their particular metering point. And then there's a return on investment. And I think the important part of the return on investment is that is our little component. So you can see here, we don't call out debt service. The city does have debt service. How we are generating their proportional share of that debt service is partly worth this rate rate of return. So the rate of return is extremely important in a wholesale type of rate setting approach to include in that particular cost component. And we'll go.
Angie, I just want to clarify that uh the wholesale user is using the city's infrastructure up to the point of the wholesale meter.
Correct, absolutely. Just not the distribution system and and fire, I believe.
Yeah, thank you.
And so what we're looking, what we looked at and worked with staff on is again, looking very similarly to retail, we're looking at the usage and how many meters that they have. We're looking at the eligible assets that they use. And so again, as Mr. Mayor had mentioned. We are looking at the the systems and the functions of the systems and where is their metering point and what do they benefit from? And what are those eligible assets? That we should be collecting depreciation and re- return on. So again, there were owners of the system because we've invested in the system. And have the risk of operating the particular utility. And so that rate of return again is compensating for that debt service and that risk associated with that being owners of the system. And so we take a very detailed and data-driven approach in terms of calculating those particular charges. So similarly, we're looking at each line item operating budget. Does it apply? Does it not apply? Each asset, do they benefit for these particular assets? Do they not? What is eligible? What is not? And it all will come together in terms of the cost of service for the wholesale customer class. And that is essentially like a five, five step process. So again, here now we're looking at more retail altogether, which we just looked at, so we had separated retail. Now we're gonna loop it lump them back together and then wholesale. And so you can see there, there's about whole five to six wholesale meters. There are more meter service equivalents because they have larger meters. And so that's why what makes them move from a six meters to thirty seven meter service equivalents, because they have larger meters and represent more of an equivalent when they have a larger meter. Annual use is about six point three percent. And then again, peaking factor surprisingly actually is not as high as the retail customers in terms of their peak day. And again, I think it's because there's more native landscape there and not so so manic much manicured landscape. And so likely, they're not using potentially as much water for that. When we look at their share of operating and maintenance expenses as well as annual depreciation, again, based on the analysis that we looked at line item detail. We show that they represent and are allocated about four percent of the operating and maintenance expenses, so about a hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. For those eligible assets, again, up to the point from the treatment to get that to their point of delivery. We are allocating them about three percent of depreciation for those particular eligible assets, so about twenty five thousand dollars per year for those particular two components. And then we get to the rate of return, which also is looking at a number of different things. So it's identifying what is the value of the assets that they're benefiting from, again, from treatment to the point of delivery. That's about one point seven million dollars in terms of that particular net asset value. Then we're allowed to again calculate a rate of return on those particular assets that they're essentially renting from the city. For a total of about eighty five thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. That's a third component of the O and M annual depreciation and return. Again, the rate of return is looking at a weighted average cost of capital. So we're looking at the city's cost of debt, their equity. And again, looking at various different bond buyers index and treasury to to identify really what is a fair rate of return in terms of charging for the wholesale customer. And that resulted in five point one percent. When we add all of those pieces together, we can see there that O and M annual depreciation and the return. Total together about two hundred and thirty three thousand dollars for the wholesale cost of service uh component there. You are currently collecting in terms of two thousand twenty three existing revenue about a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. But that does represent about a twenty six and a half percent increase for the wholesale customers. When we look at now that we identified the cost to serve the wholesale customers, again, similarly, how do you collect that that particular revenue from the wholesale customer? Again, industry practice is that when you're trying to align your rate design, you're gonna look kind of align the fixed charges with the variable charges. Here in this particular case, the fixed charges are depreciation and return on investments, because again, that is the part that is allowing us to help contribute to the debt service that we have in terms of the city. And so we want to recover about the hundred and ten thousand from those two components from the fixed charges and the remainder would then be collected from the variable charge. A little bit of a difference in terms of structure for the wholesale customers, as you can see the table. Uh, down below, again, on the left hand side here, is essentially showing that right now there is a three tier rate structure for the wholesale customer. When you send them their bill, they kind of go through the tiers as well. When we looked at the data and the analysis, it's very few times that that wholesale customer actually gets into the second and third tier. And so the question was, well, why do we have the second and third tiers if if they're not es- essentially being used? And so what we wanted to change that to is to a more flat rate per. Uh, unit of water usage for wholesale customers. And so that's what you see there in terms of the left hand side at two dollars and eighty five cents.
Mister Mayor, Angie.
Yeah.
Why why does the rate fall by so much from three ninety one currently to two eighty five? When we're trying to recoup some revenue from wholesale?
Yeah, so we're gonna try and collect more on the fixed charge. So we're gonna collect more of that for the hundred and ten thousand. We're gonna try to collect more from that fixed charge than we are currently collecting today. And I think, and that's a really good lead into that very bottom table, if you can look at that. What we're looking at there is when we kind of just said, well, how are they paying today versus how are they going to be paying under this new rate structure? You can see that the currently from again, left to right is you're only getting about fourteen thousand from the fixed charge today. And the majority of your revenue is coming from that variable charge, a hundred and seventy thousand today. What we'd like to do is adjust that a little bit more so we have more revenue stability. And so it's a little bit more fifty fifty, you know, forty seven fifty three, I think it was. Um, so now we're gonna be collecting a hundred and ten from that fixed charge and the variable charge is gonna be making up a little bit less of that revenue that we can anticipate.
And that fixed charge is based on those six meters, basically for wholesale customers?
Yeah, they'll be spread amongst the six meters. But it is recovering, you know, that and the depreciation and the rate of return for that, which translates more to, you know, again, also contributing to the debt service payment that the city. Is obligated to.
So Mister Mayor, um, if I may, so we're not trying to encourage any kind of conservation of water usage with the wholesale customer with. Because we're getting rid of the tiers.
With this particular rate, you're absolutely right. So with the tiers. The wholesale customer in general is not going to get as strong of a price signal. What has happening is they're purchasing water from you and distributing to their customers. And so if they're gonna get. Conservation, it's going to be essentially how they're gonna charge their customers in their rate structure. So they could actually have a tiered rate. So they could purchase. It's as, you know, on a flat rate, but they could provide a tiered rate structure on their side to to ensure that their customers are conserving water, because they really don't want to buy a whole lot from you, I'm sure, in terms of their bill.
Well, nothing, I would interpret that as if you don't encourage the wholesale purchaser, it's, there's no incentive for them to encourage. Their customers either. And I think this is really where my question earlier that I had you answer. Revolved more around slide number thirty in this because. Wholesale customers, it's outside of standpoint city limits to some degree, so. Lots more stuff could happen out there. And 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 that's all, of course. Conjecture or what could or couldn't happen, but I guess there's. I still am concerned about overall usage, so I don't. Yeah, okay.
There isn't the direct correlation with wholesale customers on conservation, the way that we get with our retail customers because. For example, because it's the charge is based on how much water they're using. If they have development in their area and they're adding new customers. Then it's not encouraging conservation in that tier. They might go up in tier because they have more customers, which doesn't have to do with conservation. They in their rate structure are encouraged. Um, just like what we are with the water rules to have conservation rate structures and have those in in their rates. And what we looked at with them was, again, because they're. Operating in their own, they might add additional customers. We're just talking about how much water is going through our meter. There may be very variables, whereas with us. If a customer is using more, um, and we can encourage through conservation, we can get that benefit and there's that direct correlation.
Mister Mayor and Jennifer, can I add to that? Uh, I like that because this is a great philosophical discussion as well. And it's one we have internally and certainly one I think about also in terms of. You know, what is our relationship with the wholesale customer? And um. I've I've been working on negotiating these contracts as well, at least one in particular. And um. So I kind of know how may it play out, you know, behind the meter. So the first thing I think of is uh Seringo, for instance, only has a three inch meter. And as a matter of fact, the the entire system is a very small system physically speaking. They can only push so much water through there. In other words, they don't have eight inch mains, they don't provide fire flow and fire service. As an example, and so they're physically constrained as well. And so they're they're uh in my mind, their motivation for conservation is additional customers. And so they may impose on their customers conservation rates so they can add to the system because it's so physically limited. And so I think in my mind, it's a little bit different, you know, philosophically what they do. And then getting back to negotiating the contract itself. Uh, as the uh provider, the purveyor. Now the contract can just talk about the meter and the usage and the fixed cost. We don't have to go in behind there and see what they're doing. To their two hundred customers or something, you know, we don't need to know that anymore because we have comfort in the fact that if they want to come back for an additional size meter. Or upsize the lines within their system. or upsize the lines within their system, they have to negotiate that through the contract. So we have control over that as well.
Okay, that's maybe the piece, the puzzle that was missing that it wasn't clear to me. So getting that background is very, very helpful. Thank you.
And I just want to mention though, too, that, you know, when we were preparing for this meeting internally, I, I, I paused on the same slide and was concerned around, you know, whether or not we're encouraging conservation in the, in the water districts. And um, so I, I also, you know, I hear your concern, Councilwoman, and um, you know, I think that this is a good debate to have.
We're almost there.
Just one more question, since we were on the whole contracts. What is, is that a yearly contract that we're negotiating with this or wholesale customers all different? And you don't have to give a long-winded answer, just a quick. Um, not that you're long-winded. I didn't want, I didn't mean, but I just, I don't, I don't want to stall the meeting. I love to listen to him talk. But are we five-year contracts, three-year contracts, one-year contracts? How does that?
The uh, the one that I've been working on is a two-year contract.
Okay.
There'd be, it's in their interest to negotiate a longer-term contract and they may come back with that, but currently it's very short-term.
Okay.
Okay, so we are now kind of winding down in terms of the summary of the quite a bit of data that was provided, information provided to council this evening. So in summary, again, looking at the cost of service, what we were showing is that the multifamily class, based on the bar that the top table there was paying above their cost of service, irrigation and wholesale paying below their cost of service. And so essentially what the table below is doing is that it's phasing in the retail customer classes to get it within that alignment, the dotted lines. Phasing it in over time for a six-year time period for the retail customers, two thousand twenty-eight, and then the wholesale customers were looking to right-size that uh immediately in two thousand twenty-three. And so that's where we're getting that three point eight. So we're staying again with that three point eight percent, but that is how the adjustments are by class are changing in order to to maintain that three point eight percent. In terms of the overall study, uh, results for the cost of service and rate design, again, as you have seen, it is a highly data-driven analysis in terms of cost of service and redesign, really focusing specifically on city-specific data, city-specific customer demands, usage and facility requirements. What we have shown in terms of the results or that for the cost of service adjustments, we would like to phase in or proposing, excuse me, to phase in and mitigate the rate increases on multifamily. So again, they wouldn't be the three point eight percent. They'd be something lower. Irrigation needs to go up. It would be something higher in terms of the overall average. And in summary, in terms of the rate design changes, shifting the residential tier thresholds for that first and second block to include more usage, eliminating the build minimum usage for the residential class. Also eliminating the whole seasonal rates for multifamily and industrial and actually just combining that commercial customer class to consolidate um into one class. And on the wholesale side, I think, again, analysis was completed to calculate their specific cost of service. We're proposing to implement the calculated rates as shown and revise the rate design to a uniform rate structure instead of a tiered rate structure. That does conclude the water cost of service and rate design and actually all four components of the uh, rate study process that we have been on a journey completing over the last, last year. Uh, as we mentioned in the, the beginning of the presentation, we will be back to discuss the sewer utility at a future date. Or council had noted some issues that we're going to be looking into. Then we'll come back and discuss and address.
Thank you both for that presentation. That was great. Does council have any further questions?
Mr. Mayor, I actually have a comment. I'm, this is one of my top three all-time favorite presentations to city council. And I mean that because I, I'm blown away by how much thought and analysis goes into what for a lot of people are kind of something we don't think about all that often. You know what I mean? We're talking like thirty eight dollars a month. But there are many in our community for whom that is actually a significant expense. So the, the underlying like purpose of this study, which I think we just need to, you know, remind the citizens of is that idea of equity. And we're trying to, you know, bring in an element of equity, even for something as, you know, as little as a forty-dollar water bill. So, I mean, I've learned a tremendous amount and I'm really thankful that staff brought you guys in to do this work because it's, it's really, uh, the, the amount of data and analysis that went into it is, is super impressive. Thank you.
Right. Well, and even
Thank you, counselor.
Summer months, right? I think eliminating that and, and also the work that had, that staff had to do between changing the seasons, right? I think that that information is really interesting as well.
Mr. Mayor, our
Yeah.
Our silent partner in this too has been Sarah. As she told you, she likes numbers rather than words and her favorite. But Angie and Brooke did a substantial amount of work on this. Obviously you see this, but behind the scenes too. It was Sarah on our team that went through, redid analysis and worked through and suggest revisiting things and really understood the customer complaints on utility billing, the lack of understanding and Michelle Manco so on her team too. Most everyone who pays a utility bill and does it in person knows Michelle and many come in to pay specifically to see Michelle and talk with her. So there was a lot of work that went with our finance team on this.
Thank you, Sarah.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question.
Yeah.
Probably to staff. Um, did you guys work with any of the irrigation users? Have you presented these numbers as what they look like here with the rates jumping up? Because I think my, my only concern with all this, I think it's amazing. It's a, it's, uh, you can tell the hard work that was put into it. I understand, uh, council rule and councillor, um, uh, Andy's. We, we may get some water conservation from a single-family user uh, as rates jump up. But when you take a look, when you think about irrigation, uh, and you said some of them are for manicured yards and green spaces that we have and football fields and whatnot. As, as a small business owner that purchases commodities, if I saw a rate jump up the way this one is jumping up, I would shift gears as part and and probably have a negative unintended consequence in terms of paving or zero-scaping my well-manicured property or house. Do we lose green space or potentially cost our citizens more money in terms of the irrigation if we're dealing with farmers that have to raise their prices twenty to twenty-five percent or leave the area due to the irrigation jump?
Eric, can you speak to our irrigation users? Because I know you've looked at that the most and have a good sense of who that really is.
One thing I want to, um, good evening. The one thing I do want to note is that there is a revenue um for the whole entire system. So when one user is paying less, one's paying more. So I want to keep that in the equity part um at the top forefront of the conversation. Um, but yes, the um irrigation for the city actually has several irrigation um lines. I would say that uh in the Home Depot has, it's, if when you think of big green space, that's the one that the irrigation. I guess going down, we did consider that. We had, uh, we have not talked to them directly um about that. We did phase it in over time. So that also allows us to look at it every year and um address that as it comes up every year. So I think that that was our uh main factor of mitigation of how, how to get this and see how it affects everything. And to see if that is, if it's conservation, then it, it, it will have to shift into other areas too. So we do get, and I know we mentioned this, um, we do get the um, the Excel spreadsheet. So we will be updating those annually as we have things come in. So I can actually real-time see um how things happen and um how it plays out.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Yeah.
A quick follow-up to that. How many actual irrigation users do we have within the city limits? Do you know that?
That was across in and out of city was like sixty-seven, but that's in and out.
So there's only sixty-seven total users that are irrigation account-wise anyway.
So the city might have ten of those accounts. The school district might have five of those accounts. So
Okay.
Very much.
So we're not talking about a huge number of accounts. Okay.
And we are talking mostly commercial. It is very, I don't even know if there is any residential at all.
Okay.
And no farms.
Right. That's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah.
And one, one other thing I do want to mention about this study that I really appreciate is how it, it um, it really works to bring affordability, uh, particularly to those residents in our city that um, you know, struggle to pay their bills, right? So um, if, if a, a family chooses to um, you know, be as conservative as they can with their water, they can see a significant drop in their, in their bill. And even for the average user, um, it's going to, they're going to see a drop in their, in their water bill. So I really appreciate that component as we um, have a lot of conversations in these chambers about affordability in this community and what can we do to, to make a sample more affordable for our residents? So I appreciate that. Um, any further questions or comments from council? Okay. Uh, let's see here. Give me a moment as I find myself here. Okay, so um, next, the council will review the proposed water fee changes and schedule a public hearing on proposed new water fees and existing fees to propose to increase more than five percent. All the fees revised reflected on the chart included in the packet, including fees set to increase five percent or less, which do not require a public hearing. For those fees that do require a public hearing, city staff has requested a hearing date of April fifth, two thousand twenty-three. And now you, now you have the floor to Finance Director Sarah Lynn.
Good evening again. I wanted to do a quick, uh, just recap kind of what we already just talked about. Um, and um, this is, so we're, we are proposing to have two dates here in our proposal. The first one is the equity adjustment and the second one is our um annual, um, the three point eight percent across the board. Of course, every one of those, um, as we just saw are a little bit different, either higher or lower. So I wanted to go through the retail fixed monthly rates first. Um, the current is no proposed change to that um fixed rate. And again, this is for residential, multifamily, commercial and irrigation. These are the, just the base fixed monthly rates. And then effective as of the um, at the end of um, or the fiscal year um twenty-four would be the three point eight across the board in that.
And for council, the reason that we've got the two rate changes is we're typically adjusting our utility rates um, in the summer when we're doing all the rest of our fees. We have a long fee schedule, as you know, when we are um adjusting fees and rates. And we felt it would be more simplistic and understandable to the public if we just address what we're doing with rate changes now at one time, rather than we just did a rate change effective October one, do an equity change now this spring and then come back and we have another rate change that they weren't expecting in the fall. So that's the reason you're seeing both of these at this time. Typically, we would be doing that as part of our budget presentation and fee hearing that we're doing in August.
This is the volume, the retail, um, the volume rates. Noting the six thousand gallons I put that in red. So you can see here what we were talking about, the um, the lower tier is going down a little where the higher tiers are going up. So you've got the percentage change um across the board. The commercial there is um list or is consolidated since it is um a, um, several different um, volume chart changes across the different classes there. And then with the effective date for uh the nine sixteen, I did want to point out, we did make the um recommendation for nine sixteen because our meter reads actually are on the fifteenth of the month. So when we do a ten, one or a beginning of the month, it actually splits a bill into two, which is even harder to explain um, from a utility billing standpoint of why did our race go up? And then why did they go up again? You know, it, it's just better to do it all at one. That's why that, the sixteenth is what was picked. So the, the changes will not be seen. So this, this three sixteen change will be seen on the, on the May billing and the nine sixteen will be on the October billing. And then moving down to the wholesale, this is the big change of the um, the fixed um, cost and the volume chart change here. Now, I want, did want to point out the, the fixed rates were calculated on a five-year average between the three of them. So we took the five-year usage and then divided um that by five to get what was each, each one of these users' usage amount. And then divided that by the, to get the uh monthly rates. And again, that will be looked at um rolling forward. Then these are the, just the other utility rates. Um, did want to point out the, the last three there, those are applicable across the board to both sewer and water. That's why there's a twelve percent um is because it's an average of the nineteen and the three point eight percent. Heading down to the public hearing, these are just the one, the rates that are above the five percent or the new, the new one. So this is what we're asking to schedule the public hearing.
All right. Is that it, Sarah?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, council, any questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for council's regular meeting on April fifth, two thousand twenty-three to take public testimony regarding proposed new water fees and existing fees proposed to increase more than five percent. Sir, motion?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes and I would encourage everyone to attend the public hearing on April fifth to provide feedback on the proposed new water rates. You're also welcome to submit written comments prior to that date. Any written comments received before March thirty-first will be included in the meeting packet for council consideration. Written comments can be emailed to this, to cityclerk@sandpointidaho.gov. At this time, I'll call for a five-minute brief recess. We'll reconvene in five minutes. Thank you. Okay. Let's see here. I think uh next council will consider releasing a development agreement previously entered into with Brad and Linda Scott regarding parking requirements at one oh two Euclid Avenue. And now you have the floor to City Planner Amy Tweed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, good evening, council. So the request before you this evening um is a resolution that would release uh, the development agreement between the city of Sandpoint and Brandon, Brad and Linda Scott uh, regarding the property at one oh two Euclid Avenue, which is the former high school building um, at the northwest corner of Euclid and Westlake. Uh, background on the agreement, uh, it was entered into in two thousand and seven when the Scots were uh working on the redevelopment of that building. Um, and in, and the development agreement itself included both provisions about impact fees uh, for that redevelopment and that discussion of parking requirements based on what the projected uses of the building were. And at that time, the calculation was a hundred and twenty-six spaces to be required. Uh, in two thousand and ten, um, the project was brought back and the planning commission um revised the parking requirement to a hundred and three based on the uses that actually were going into the building. Um, and then in two thousand eighteen, there was an expansion of the parking exempt district that was originally just downtown and it was um expanded uh, or an additional boundary was created called the exempted non-residential use. Um, and in that boundary, non-residential uses would not have to provide parking. So um, the issue before you um is that uh two thousand eight amendment that is shown on this um slide. It's the white line is where the boundary was expanded and the Scott property you will see identified in the southwest corner. Uh, so that property was put into the revised boundary. Um, and section nine of the uh two thousand and seven development agreement um, does state that the agreement does not supersede city code, including zoning. Um, however, that agreement, because it's recorded, um, comes up if people are searching the property or is identified with the property. So um, how Seth became aware of it is Mr. Scott was looking at doing some lot line adjustments on his property. And so the question came up, what's, what supersedes? Um, but the agreement does say that zoning supersedes and the Scots are requesting that the agreement be released just so that that isn't always out there every time someone's looking um to do something with the property. So again, uh, the property owners are requesting the, a release So again, the property owners are requesting the, a release of the agreement just to clarify that the property is within that exempted non-residential use boundary. And a resolution is before you, that's been drafted to address that release.
Sorry. Thank you, Amy. Does council have any questions? Okay, Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I entertain a motion, I will entertain a motion approving the resolution for release of development agreement with Brad and Linda Scott for the property known as 102 Euclid Avenue. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, council will consider a second amendment to city agreement number A20-3170-3 with JUB Engineers Incorporated. This proposed amendment will progress the design to 60% complete construction documents for the entire Great Northern Road corridor and bring the total agreement amount to $998,824. And now you have the, yield the floor to Infrastructure Development Services Director Amanda Wilson.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and good evening, council. Just pull up my slide here. Perfect. Again, before I begin with the presentation this evening, I just wanted to let council know that we have JUB engineers online with us this evening. Kevin Smith, which is the project manager for the design effort, is online and available for any questions through the process. And then in addition, we have our construction manager for this project with us. This is Eric Bush and he's going to give the last half of the presentation, but always kick us off with some background. So as the mayor mentioned, this is a requested action item number 7F requesting an amendment to the design contract with JUB Engineers. A little bit of background regarding Urban Renewal Agency and the authority under Idaho Code and what that entails. Essentially, it provides the city or cities to have the authority to create an urban renewal agency that acts independently. The purpose of that agency is really to assist us with investing in a specific area to improve, to make improvements for economic vitality that are related to job creation as well as encourage investments within a defined area. It allows us to use tax increment financing for specific urban renewal projects that are defined within an adopted plan that we initiated as part of that creation of the agency. So Sandpoint, as you all are probably aware, we have two districts, one in our downtown and the other in our northern area. In 2005, a plan was established for the northern district and that plan was amended in 2010 that really identified and discussed in great detail all the various improvements along the Great Northern Road that were needed to help do the very purpose of an urban renewal agency, which is to inspire economic vitality in that area. Wanted to show you the screenshot here of the northern urban renewal area itself. So this is, I think of it as a planning area. This is the area that we're trying to have a positive impact on. That's the hatched area in green. And then you have a northern urban renewal area that defines a revenue allocation area. Think of this as where we can spend our money. So Great Northern Road, only a portion of it is located within our revenue allocation area. Approximately that is just north of Gooby Road. So right below the word great there is Gooby Road running east and west. And the corridor improvement project identified within the urban renewal district actually is for improvements all the way from Baldi to Woodland Drive to the north. But just recognizing that that's the overall planning area, but the only location we can spend revenues collected from via urban renewal is north of Gooby. Wanted to talk a little bit about design process. This is a slide that may be familiar to you. We presented it at our last city council meeting. And it's just a general slide that's applicable, quite frankly, to majority of the projects that we go through design and then ultimately construction. And how that design process progresses, depending upon the complexity of the project, we might go from zero to 100 pretty quickly. If it's a simple curb repair project, something without multiple disciplines within it. Other projects such as Great Northern, we start with community priorities. In this case, that was our urban renewal plan initially. So at that point, we had zero design. We had a very long narrative in a plan that just said, we need stormwater improvements. We need roadway improvements and utilities and lighting and all of these things listed would be improvements in this area. And then we progress that into a concept. And we use the word concept or cartoons a lot when we talk about design and that they are pretty fuzzy pictures and they lack a lot of detail. Sometimes those concepts are done in a manner that shows trees or landscaping just to be able to help communicate what it's ultimately going to feel and look like. Then that concept progresses to typically what's called a feasibility study, where we're really looking at a little bit more detail and we're trying to get that design, the percentages on the bottom of the bar representing that it goes to approximately 10 to 30% design completion is what we refer to it. So we've taken it from a cartoon and now we're progressing it a little bit more. Where we're at today is the brown box and that's preliminary design. So that's looking at some projects, you can call 30, you can call preliminary design 30%. You can call it 60% industry standard is the ranges that I provided there on the, the slide. Once we have 30 to 60% complete drawings and we have more detail, then we reengage the community and we start having more conversations about that, what it's going to look like, what it's going to feel like. But now the specificity is getting more and more great as we progress in that bar from the left to right. Then we get to construction documents. So that's where we really get to understand our costs much more thoroughly and we have quantities and we know how thick the asphalt's going to be and how big all the pipes are going to be. And so, once we have that information, depending upon how we're funding a project, then we can either use the funds that we have to progress it to the 100% or we can say, wow, we have a lot of certainty here. We're going to go out and try to. So again, today we are talking about a preliminary design effort with the intent, as the mayor mentioned, to get us to a 60% design. Background more specific to the Great Northern Project in June of 2020, we publicly solicited design services for that feasibility study that was noted on this slide. During that solicitation, we were very clear to the proposals that we were trying to select a team for the entire design process. But we also gave ourselves an out that depending upon how that feasibility process went, we also reserved the right to go back out and solicit for design services. In this case, because we allowed ourselves the flexibility within the requests for qualifications, JUB has a substantial amount of knowledge and institutional knowledge, I would say, on this project, given that they did the feasibility effort for us and their performance certainly met our expectations and in many cases exceeded it. Therefore, staff's recommendation is to move forward with a change order to their contract. Between the feasibility study that occurred in 2021, so again, we had a, a list of priorities in a plan. We had a concept and a feasibility study. And then we took that feasibility information and we incorporated it into the multimodal plan, which is why the Great Northern Project has a little bit more detail in the multimodal plan than you'll notice some of our other disciplines do. So now in 2023, city council adopted a budget that includes approximately $1.2 million to invest in the design and right-of-way acquisition efforts for furthering this design. I do want to note that that 1.2, and Eric will get into more details on this, is spread across multiple funds. So that includes the urban renewal funds that I discussed at the front end, but it also includes funds from the water fund and the sewer fund. Because as you may recall, our utility master plans also identified improvements along the Great Northern Corridor. And I just wanted to show the, the cartoon image, if you will, that is included in our multimodal plan that's been adopted. So that's figure 21. What you don't see is that the feasibility study actually has a much more defined design that is backing this cartoon drawing. For the sake of consistencies with the other cartoons in the plan, it's shown in this regard. So the orange line is representing what is intended to be the new alignment of Great Northern. So on the left-hand side, left is south and right is north. On the left-hand side is the intersection with Baldi Mountain Road and on the far right is the Woodland Drive. As you progress your way from Baldi, you'll notice that one of the key components of this project moving forward was to adjust the alignment at the intersection of Baldi and Great Northern. As many of you have most likely driven that intersection, it's, it comes in at a skew. It's also really narrow and there's a utility pole there. So the intent was to square that up and get it a little bit further away from the railroad tracks there that it intersects with to the west. As we work our way north, the alignment primarily stays the same until it gets to Gooby Road, at which point, for safety reasons, as you may recall, we squared the intersection up. So instead of continuing north at Gooby Road, motorists will come, if you are heading northbound to a stop sign, take a right and then continue north. That, from an industry standard perspective, is significantly safer, especially when you're at that Gooby intersection and it comes in at that angle and skew, there's a lot of near misses there. As you work your way north, it ties back into its alignment as it heads north up to Woodland Drive. I will note that as we move through the right-of-way acquisition process, there might be some minor adjustments to this alignment and it is truly a cartoon in that fashion. For example, at Woodland Drive, we anticipate that there may be some opportunities to shift that roadway alignment even further to the east. And overall, when it comes to utilities, currently today, we have a number of locations, I would say majority of the locations throughout this corridor where water and sewer are actually located on private property. They're not in their typical location, which would be within the public right-of-way or below the road surface. So they're dissecting private property, which again, back to the purpose of urban renewal, is to enable economic development. This project's really intended to address the stormwater issues that are currently creating issues to the east for private developers or private property owners to develop and further expand their businesses as well as those utilities that are having to be designed around. So for example, we had an application recently of a long Great Northern and they are designing their layout of their buildings to avoid putting their buildings on top of our sanitary sewer line. That's disadvantageous to them. So the intent with this project is to get that sewer line out of their property, release that easement and get it in the right of way where it's having the least amount of impact on businesses as possible.
Amanda, before you move on from this slide, can I ask a couple of questions? Part of the purpose of this project originally too was to create a transportation corridor for, particularly for commercial trucking traffic. And I'm curious about that realignment at Gooby Road where it's a 90-degree intersection there and it seems, from memory, it seems really tight right there. Would, would there be a stop sign there and, you know, if, and, and I guess, is that an easy? You know, obviously we're considering that trailer trucks are going to be making this, this traverse here. And is that going to be an easy, you know, fluid journey for them?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a great question. The design vehicle, basically what size of vehicle we're reviewing when we're looking at the roadway widths and the turn lanes in that area will be part of the design process. At this point, our preliminary design reflected that we do have the space at that location to accommodate that, that type of a design vehicle or basically a semi that would typically be found in the industrial zone. As far as where stop signs are going, we're really not in a position to commit to that at this time. My sense is that we really need to have more coordination with the railroad because that needs to be a safe crossing, obviously, from the railroad's perspective. So in theory, if the railroad weren't there, you could, because of the volume of traffic on Great Northern, you could have a, what they call a free left and a free right, so that it's Gooby from the, Gooby traffic from the west coming into Great Northern would be the motorists that stop. In this case, the tracks add a little bit of complication to that. So I think that's something, how it actually functions at that location will continue to do through the design process, but absolutely it'll accommodate truck traffic.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then I do just want to note that there's a typical section at the top of the page. It's a funny phrase we use, typical, because they're often not typical. But the intent is just to show that on the left-hand side of that image, that's the west side of Great Northern. So it's looking north that will have drainage primarily. Our intent is to do that within the railroad right-of-way with some additional easements to have dedicated bike lanes because we definitely know that we have a lot of cyclists that prefer to go to Schweitzer in a manner that's within the road and most efficient versus being mixed maybe with pedestrians on a multi-use path. So kind of two different users at time. And then the multi-use path being a nice wide pathway with our appropriate buffer zone with the intent to have an, our urban tree canopy as well. And there's also been discussions and contemplation in the feasibility study. You know, the hope would be to have more pedestrian-oriented lights. If, you know, subject to funding, of course, so really make it a corridor that we're proud of and further that pedestrian corridor.
Mr. Mayor, a quick question for Amanda. So the choice to have the bike path on the east side, is that mainly because of how the drainage is going to work?
Actually, it's more around stormwater and safety from the railroad. We want to get pedestrians and bicycles away from both.
Okay, so that's why the choice was to put it on the other side of.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Any other questions before we move on regarding the design process? Okay, Eric, I will hand it over to you. Tell me when to click.
Okay, so I'm sure you all are very curious about timing and the wins and the hows and the whys. On the left-hand side, we are obviously currently in 2023. We're working on, we will be working on, pending approval of this action today, 60% drawing set. Our design team, JUB expects that that timeframe will take about a year to complete. From there, we will have enough information to begin the right-of-way acquisition process and that, that is reaching out to those adjacent landowners, starting those conversations and, and kind of kicking that process off. Ideally, we could start it now, but we can't because we need to make sure we have our layout finalized and all of our kind of details figured out before we start approaching those landowners to acquire those rights away as needed. Additionally, we will, this calendar year, begin our permitting process and coordination with adjacent utilities and BNSF in the corridor area. Our permitting process includes things like coordination with the Army Corps, biological inventories, those sorts of things that are, can take a bit of time to acquire. So we want to get started on those early and we will, as we're going through this process, have enough information to make sure we're updating those dates. So we're not waiting on a permit when we're ready to go out to bid. For 2024, we, we expect to have 100% drawings for phase one and I'll tell you what phase one will be in just a second. And we will continue to refine our phasing plan, meaning how we're going to accomplish the rest of the project. In '25, we expect that we will be, that we will have all the right-of-ways acquired by that timeframe and that we will be bidding phase one, which is north of Gooby. And that we will start construction on phase one in 2025. We expect phase one construction to take about a year. So you'll see in '26 that that is phase one construction completion. And then from there, we are a little bit early in the process to talk about phases two and three as far as schedule and that sort of thing. We'll know a little bit more as we get a little further along in this process. And the key date to consider in there is that our syrup fund sunset in 2029, which seems like a long time from now, what it is. But these projects tend to sneak up on you in that way. So we just want to make sure we're being cognizant of that. So we're, you know, remaining in compliance with that timeframe. On this slide, this constitutes our. Now, on this slide, um this constitutes our phasing plan as it stands today. Um, the red line that is kind of on the west side and you see kind of squiggles down towards Gooby. Um, that is our intended phase one. Um, that's within the Sura Northern Revenue Allocation Area, and that's where we want to start the project. Um, so it will be from Gooby North. Um, phase two, or at least our current plan for phase two, is to continue um the improvements on Great Northern um from Gooby South down to Baldi Mountain Road. Um and then phase three would be our multimodal plan that Amanda was referencing on the east side of Great Northern. Um so that that's um that green line in there, that will be, that's our plan for phase three. Go ahead a minute. And um this complicated-looking spreadsheet um is not all that complicated. Um but this this kind of denotes um how we um are breaking out and spending our funding and how our funding is allocated um from Sura um general funds, our water funds and our sewer funds. Um, the key numbers to look at are um kind of in the bottom left there, the total, the nine hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred. Um, that's our total design contract through sixty percent drawings, which is what is before you today uh for action. Um, we will have additional design contracts for phase two and three. Um four hundred percent construction documents that will be coming um at a later date. Um but this is where we stand today, um and this total represents um cost through sixty percent design, as I said. Um, total design costs are expected to be approximately one point four million. Um, we'll know a little bit more as we proceed through the, you know, through this process here in the next year or two. Um, and um we expect us to um make a lot of headway on the design through sixty percent this year.
And so other portion would be what, streets or? What are we considering to be the other portion?
Uh gen- general fund and um additional funding if we um get further along in the process and need to acquire additional funding.
Okay.
Or need to seek additional funding, rather. Um, with that being said, um this action request before you um is what we are um asking you for today. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions, counsel or um mayor or asset may have.
All right, counsel, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a quick question for Amanda. Um, if you could just go back to the picture, the drawing, I guess. Um, I, as I looked at this, um I was just wondering how the Baldi Road improvements fit into this. And if there was any way we're kind of looking at the short section that would connect this then to at least Division at this point, so that we would, because we do have bike lanes down Division, so that we would kind of have a continuous. I mean, I don't know where those Baldi improvements fit into the whole package, but I just wanted to get clarified, because we haven't talked about Baldi in a while.
We haven't, no, I appreciate that question. Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I?
Yeah, please. It's a good question.
And the location, as I'm sure counsel is aware, uh is specifically between Division and Baldi. Our multimodal transportation plan identifies that connection uh between the two locations so that we do have continuity, especially from all the different users and schools and library, et cetera, on Division North. We're getting a lot of growth from a residential perspective north of Woodland and providing that continuity, I think, is essential. We do not have at this time uh a programmed date for those improvements. Those are considered midterm improvements, so we're not necessarily actively seeking um funding, if you will. Uh but it doesn't mean that we don't have funding for it. For example, um we, as you know, recently passed the local option tax for sidewalk improvements. So it's not that we are necessarily short on uh sidewalk or pedestrian funds. The biggest challenge along the Baldi Mountain corridor for connection is stormwater. And there's a significant ditch on the south side, as you're well aware. And so us being able to come up with a cost-effective solution at that location requires a little bit more attention. It's not currently in J U B's scope of work uh to resolve that issue. But I appreciate your point and I think that they can um, you know, hopefully run concurrently. My sense, and as Eric uh noted, you know, phase three is noted as our pedestrian and bicycle facilities. You know, my hope would be that when we're implementing phase three, that we're at a point that we have a solid design on that section for Baldi Mountain, so that it truly is a continuous connection. That would certainly be the most effective versus having this little gap between Great Northern and Division. So I hear you. Um, phase three was pulled out in that regard. And as Eric noted, we really need to get further in the design to refine our phasing. But we're trying to stretch our Sura dollars as far as we can. If our design and our construction costs come to a point where we have available funding uh remaining from the Sura funds, then those could certainly be used within the revenue allocation area to complete some of those pedestrian and bicycle facilities in a more timely manner. We just really need to uh continue to get through the design process to see how those funds play out. Obviously, they wouldn't be used on Baldi Mountain, but.
Um, and then one, this is a yes or no question. So in the phase one and phase two, will that include bike lanes on the road surface and not a separate bike path?
The intent would be to complete the full width of the roadway. So those would, at this point, be within the roadway section. The dedicated bike lanes are the intent. So as we progress the design, as we've done with, for example, the downtown revitalization projects, as we get those details, we'll be coming back to council and showing you our plan progress um for your input on things like that. But our intent absolutely, as is shown in this drawing.
A little cartoon.
In our cartoon is to have uh dedicated bike lanes. I do want to note, we had some feedback on this previously, a fourteen-foot vehicle lane. What we're trying to show there is um that a bike lane is not supposed to technically share the shoulder. Um, a standard lane width, particularly in an industrial area, is twelve feet. The lane itself won't actually be fourteen feet, the striping. Um, it's representing that you have a twelve-foot lane with the shoulder being outside of that and the bike lane being outside of that. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, any other questions? And I'm sorry, are you still going? But that was it, right?
That was it. Thank you, Mr.
Okay. Any other questions from counsel? Okay, are there any members of the public, madam clerk, that would like to comment on this matter? I will entertain a motion approving the resolution for Second Amendment to City Agreement A twenty dash thirty-one seventy dash three with J U B engineers. Is there a motion?
Moved second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? This will be a roll-call vote.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Grove?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, council will consider a change order adding soil remediation services to the existing Gooby Road Water Main Emergency Rehabilit- Rehabilitation Construction Contract with La Riviere Inc. I'll now yield the floor to Infrastructure and Development Services Director Amanda Wilson once again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a presentation this evening on the requested change order, but I would like to note uh a couple key dates and give you an overview of the occurrences leading up to the request for the change. In twenty twenty, uh the city was notified by the railroad of a water leak just north of Gooby Road. And city council took action following that to declare an emergency for a water main replacement. Uh, in addition to just repairing that water main that was leaking, we also elected that if we were going to spend the effort and the time and the money to go underneath the railroad tracks to serve those parcels to the west, that we would upsize the line at the same time to be able to provide for future capacity. Following that, we engaged an engineer to uh develop this plan that's in front of you. And in ultimately, in twenty twenty-one, hired La Riviere to complete the work. Get a little bit technical, uh the work specifically was horizontal drilling underneath the tracks. Horizontal drilling is done in a fashion that essentially advances a casing. Think of it as a sleeve, it's a steel pipe sleeve. So as a horizontal drill uh goes underneath the tracks, a pipe follows it that serves as a sleeve. Following the placement of the sleeve is a fluid grout that basically goes um is injected through the casing, through injection holes on the outside of the casing to fill in any voids that are around the casing. That is a standard practice, and in fact, it's actually done when you're installing casing vertically as well. So it's very common as you drill, you create some voids around that casing pipe, so you go in and you fill them with a very fluid grout. Following that effort, the contractor comes in with the actual water main into the sleeved casing, does the connections on either end, tests it uh for pressure as well as um water quality and moves on. In this case, that work was completed in August of twenty twenty-one. And just shy of a a month later, uh we actually, our crews noticed some sinkholes along that alignment. We repaired the sinkholes uh just with a backhoe and uh some material. And then noticed again in March of twenty twenty-two that those sinkholes had gotten substantially larger and that they were in more locations than they originally were at the end of that summer. Um, as we just talked about, this corridor has a substantial amount of stormwater challenges and ultimately the uh subsurface is saturated much of the year. I, since March of twenty twenty-two, we have been having conversations uh not only with the contractor, but as well with the railroad and trying to fully understand our risk as well as the cause um of the settlement with the sinkholes. So the contractor engaged a licensed professional geotechnical engineer to do some investigations uh via, it it's a sound monitoring system where they can identify uh the the voids underneath the surface based upon how the sound responds. That's the simplest way I can explain it. Uh, that resulted in a report from a geotechnical engineer that says there's a substantial amount of voids, which is confirming, obviously, what we're seeing at the surface with the sinkholes. So basically, uh the voids are filling from the surface down. They're fu- it's like a funnel, right, where the material on the top is funneling into these holes, and it's around the the casing. So the geotechnical engineer with the contractor assisted in developing a solution. It's a pretty common solution. Again, it is grout, similar to what we did before, but this grout is significantly drier. And it's installed in a manner, instead of injection tubes through the casing, it's installed vertically. So they basically drill a hole and they pack grout into that hole until it fills the voids. They know it's filled the voids. When it resists, it provides enough pressure against that soil that's below it that they know they need to stop. Um, through that process, we monitor in a variety of ways. The geotechnical engineer does the railroad tracks to make sure that that grounding and pushing back up isn't actually causing any heave within the railroad tracks or any damage to the tracks. So that's part of their scope as well. Um, it's anticipated to take approximately two weeks. Uh, we do not anticipate any road closures along Great Northern Road. As far as the exact start date, we still need to coordinate um additionally with the railroad on flagging and exact timing, but the contract change order uh provides that the work will be completed by April fifteenth. And with that, I would open it up for any questions.
Mr. Mayor. So this, it's not really a question. This is, I'm a little disappointed in this one in the sense that we didn't anticipate this, like I too have done. I'm going to relate this to my own home project, and I too have had to go to the hardware store again. This one's pricey, and we live in a place called Sandpoint, so I I don't uh it it surprises me. I understand that this is standard procedure, that we did things by the book, and this is what goes on. So instead of armchair quarterbacking, which I am trying not to do, and because of the previous agenda item, we're going to be doing some things in that area that we learn from this and anticipate this, that we're going to have potential sinkhole challenges and not do that again. Like, and so I'm just expressing my disappointment of having to go to an expensive hardware store yet again to fix a hole while using a dynamic cone pentometer.
This, Mr. Mayor, may I respond?
Yeah, go ahead.
I thought he was looking for a response, but um I agree. I too am disappointed.
Good.
I will note, uh for whatever it may or may not be worth, uh in the past twenty years, I've been around a substantial amount of similar work. Uh, I've been around uh in Portland, Oregon, adjacent to the Willamette River, which too has sand. It's nothing but sand on either side of that with horrible soils. The injection grouting that our engineer included in our technical specs that our contractor performed works majority of the time. To be clear, I've never seen it not work. Um, my sense is that this is a very unique situation that ultimately, had we done geotechnical investigation in advance of going out to bid, this is pure speculation, but I'm not sure we would have received any bids because the risk would have been so great. Um, so ultimately, we would have paid for that same part at the hardware store had we remembered it the first time. In this case, it's not that we forgot it, it's that it truly is a unique situation. So I'm disappointed too at the two hundred some odd thousand dollar change order on a five hundred thousand dollar contract isn't awesome. Um, and it is never awesome working around railroad tracks. So lesson learned and noted, definitely, um and we'll continue to note that as we work on our Great Northern Improvement Project.
I do ask that question, but not with as much finesse and in person.
Amanda. Thanks for that, Amanda. Yeah, go ahead.
You just help me understand a little bit. Was it the 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 horizontal drilling and the installation of this, you said a six-inch water main going under the railroad tracks?
It's twelve-inch water.
Twelve-inch water main.
Twenty-four inch casing.
Okay, twenty-four inches. So we're talking pretty large. Okay, so you were about six inches on either side. So what's happened is the soil is caved in to within the grouted area around the 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 twelve-inch water main and the twenty-four inch casing. Is that casing failing what?
No, so the casing is not failing. Great question, and I love that you're visualizing it. So uh no grout between the water pipe and the casing.
That was that a void, is that empty?
Just a void.
Okay.
And the purpose for that void is so that in the future, if we need to replace or repair this water main, we can still get in and out of our sleeve.
Okay.
Sometimes you do fill that void. In this case, we elected not to. Um, the the voids and the settlement is, think of it this way, the injection grout, that fluid grout didn't fill all the voids or more voids occurred after the grounding because the soil is moving basically.
Outside of the sleeve.
Outside the sleeve and around it, so bottom.
A large hole was drilled into which the sleeve was placed.
Also a great question. They're almost the exact same size. So the drill bit that's used for the actual sleeve is nearly the exact same size. You just inevitably end up with very fine voids on the other side of the casing, so. And again, that also happens when you do it vertically. So if you were to do a a drilled shaft, is what it's called, when it's not horizontal drilling, um same exact process. You're you're drilling and the the casing's advancing at the exact same time. You typically come in, depending upon those soil types, if they're like this, and you inject grout into that. And you're, you really never know the quantity, because you really never know how much void you have. You just pump until it refuses, basically till you see it out the other end is how you confirm that you filled the voids, and that's what they did on this side.
Can I just add for my fellow counselors that what I love about this position is that the things that happen in the world around us that I just think are magical. You're like a magician just showing the cards, like this is how we make this happen and I'm really special.
So since everybody's asking their questions. I'm just curious how much our water table, because we have water drainage issues and um the clay soils and everything affect the actual process of getting the grout in there. Like, is there, I mean, you said it would be done by April, but because of the nature of this problem, is there a better time of year to do it?
Such a great question. I mean that wholeheartedly. We had very long conversations with the geotechnical engineer asking the exact same thing. Um, I it wasn't a bad question. I too had the same concern, actually. Um, and what was interesting to me uh is that the geotechnical engineer said they actually prefer that the soil is somewhat um frozen, if you will. It's not completely frozen, because it's not going quite fourteen feet deep in this regard, but that it assists them in the resistance that we're looking for. So their preference was to do it in the winter, actually, um which is why we're really hoping to get it done before April. I do think that um the way in which we get that free thaw out there, our groundwater table, as you know, is at the surface at that location. Um, so I think that that will continue to be part of their efforts in the quantity aspect of it, which is why you'll notice in the change order, we included a contingency, if you will, for additional quantity of grout. Because at this point, they're estimating to the best of their ability, based upon the sound monitoring that was accomplished, how much grout we're going to need. So depending upon how that goes, we might need more grout or maybe we need less.
Going back to the hardware store.
We might have to go. I hope I am not coming back to this hardware store.
Okay, council, any further questions? Madam clerk, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, hearing none. I will, I will entertain a motion approving the resolution for change order number three to city agreement. A twenty-one dash thirty-four fifty-seven dash one, Gooby Road Water Main Emergency Rehabilitation. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Grove?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes for the final item under Old Businesses Evening Council would consider an addendum to the Pine Street Sidewalk Project State Local Agreement. Increasing the total grant award amount to assist in funding actual costs for this project. And now you have the floor to Infrastructure Development Services, Amanda Wilson, once again, Director Amanda Wilson. Thanks, Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Pine Street Sidewalk Project, wanted to give you a quick slide here to, once again, give a timeline on the accomplishments with this project. You may recall in two thousand and seventeen, it was when we applied for the grant to uh, the Idaho uh, Transportation Department. For federal funding to place a sidewalk along Pine Street from North Boyer Avenue to Division Avenue. In two thousand and twenty, we received those funds. In two thousand and twenty-one, we bid or redesigned, and then we bid the project. No bids. That was a, uh, an interesting time in construction, two thousand and twenty-one for us. In two thousand and twenty-two, we tried again and had success and ultimately awarded that contract to Coyote Pack. Who uh, did a great job and completed the contract on time. It was substantially completed in August of two thousand and twenty-two. And that includes new continuous sidewalk on the north side of Pine Street, if you haven't been out there. A couple of things I wanted to note on that particular line item, while we're in two thousand and twenty-three and doing grant closeout. A couple of things to know on the project itself, uh, before we get into the grant funding. Is that when city council awarded the contract in two thousand and twenty-two to Coyote Pack. It was on a condition, and that condition was based upon the fact that the construction costs were higher. Than what we anticipated with in two thousand and seventeen, when we went out to. Uh, apply for the grant as well as what the grant was awarded for construction. So the condition was on the basis that we were able to renegotiate with the grant administrator, which is the local Highway Technical Advisory Council, LTAC. To shift dollars from construction administration to construction. So at that time, we weren't asking. The grant agency for additional dollars. We were merely saying, hey. You allocated funds for a consultant to do contract administration. We would like to shift those dollars from that fund. Into or not that fund, that um, type of expenditure to construction. And that was the condition that council approved the contract under. In our negotiations with LTAC, they came back and said, no, you can't do that, but we'll give you more money. Um, so that's ultimately was our agreement. We had an email document to uh, solidify that that was okay. And again, through a grant closeout process, it's appropriate to clean up your contract and make sure that uh, the grant award ultimately matched that email confirmation that we had. Um, so I do have another slide on actual costs um, that I'll show you here next. But I also wanted to know with the sidewalk project, we have had um. Some comments from the public. We are certainly aware of them. Um, we've walked the project multiple times and. Uh, we're having comments regarding some areas of heave. So we have some sidewalks that are actually raising up. Um, we have had our engineers out there several times. In fact, even just again today to take a look at the conditions. And ultimately, their recommendation is that we continue to monitor it. What we often find is that this will come back down. Depending upon how our soils um, respond here again in the spring. I know that sounds a little bit odd. Um, if it needs repaired, we'll certainly repair it, but we're not going to repair it until we see how this heave handles. Um, it is not a warranty issue in that regard and nor is it a design issue. Anytime we're doing sidewalks adjacent to private property, there's a variety of design issues that go on their side as far as drainage, as many of us know. Um, how individual, single-family residents handle their drainage can vary site by site. So we don't design sidewalk uh, subbase in a manner that's going to be. As stout, if you will, to accommodate every one of those different conditions. So. Um, while it's not acceptable to have a huge sidewalk after we just built it, we at this point just need to continue to monitor it. So we will do that. Um, and then we will continue to close out the grant application. And funds with the uh, funder. I wanted to give you just a highlight of costs. I know it's a lot of numbers. But on the left-hand side are the key cost categories, and uh, then we have our project total costs. How much is eligible for federal reimbursement and then the city's costs? I think it's really important to note that the way this type of grant works, we don't just get a check from the state that says, here's money and spend it how you choose. We have to comply with the, the scope of work that was in our original application, and then it's a reimbursement grant. So it's based upon how much we actually spend. At the very bottom is the two thousand and seventeen application and the estimates that we included in that application. So we had to adjust the project scope initially based upon what we originally submitted. Uh, to ensure that we were not above that amount anymore um, than what is represented. I think it's also important to note on the left-hand side that with all of our federal grant programs associated with transportation. Uh, the state gets a fee for their administration portion, LTAC gets a fee. They require that we use consultants to do the design process. They require that we use consultants to do the grant administration. And then ultimately, we also track our city staff time, which is the gray box. So salaries and other costs such as advertisements and the things that are non-grant reimbursable. Um, that's that twenty-four thousand six hundred and nine on the right. So ultimately of the five hundred thousand maximum, if you think of the, the amendment as a maximum amount that we could get reimbursed. We're going to ultimately be requesting uh, federal reimbursement of four hundred and seventy thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
Great, thank you, Amanda. Uh, does council have any questions? Hearing none, uh, madam clerk, are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this matter? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion approving the resolution for addendum to state local agreement. Design and construction project number A zero zero two two zero seven three, Pine Street Sidewalks, Sandpoint, Bonner County. Key number two two zero seven three. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Grove?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes for the final item on the agenda this evening. City staff seeks permission to apply for Idaho Transportation Department. Office of Highway Safety Grant Funding for the Police Department. Does council have any questions?
No.
Okay, madam clerk, are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the application for Idaho Transportation Department. Office of Highway Safety Grant Funding. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Grove?
Yes.
Motion passes and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your time this evening.